Okay, all set. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this February 2nd, 2022. The year is just quickly catching up on us, right? So thank you all for being here this afternoon, and we have some special guests here, so looking forward to hearing your presentation. Before we get to that, I just want to jump to the communications that we received from the -- we received communications from some of our advisory boards, and the first one was the Historic Preservation Board. They're asking that the city of Fort Lauderdale apply to make the federal courthouse a historic landmark. Any thoughts on that, folks?
I do, Mayor.
Do you?
I do.
Would you like to share them?
Thank you. Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to mention, I did read through the minutes, they had some good points, and I'm hoping that staff can reach out. Obviously, the federal government should be involved in that, and I think we should have those conversations. John, I remember that you once mentioned there's some language in the federal government about historic structures, and when the government has a building such as this, that there are some considerations, I think, that are given to it.
That's correct, Commissioner. In the Code of Federal Regulations, when it comes to their ability to dispose of property, they need to consider the historic aspects of that property as part of their disposal process.
So I think that it's worth a conversation. I certainly think the building merits it, and I would have no problem, but I think that, you know, we should give the federal government at least a heads up and have that conversation. We don't have that many buildings that would, that you could basically say were in the brutalist style, the library being one of them, but this one, when it was built in 1975, the architect was William Morgan. By the way, I forgot what town in Florida he has another governmental building, but right now it's basically used as part of, I think, a Hyatt Regency Hotel. They did a great adaptive reuse on it, but he is definitely an architect of significance. I just think it's worth a good discussion, like they had at the Historic Preservation Board, and they wanted us to basically consider that. So I think we should initiate those kinds of conversations with the federal government.
So just to give you a little heads up, when I was first elected as mayor, I became part of the working group with regard to the new federal courthouse, and in those conversations, the GSA, General Services Administration, indicated that when, should they ever sell that building, one of the stipulations would be that it had to be kept intact, it couldn't be torn down. So whether it needs to be historically designated to ensure that, that might be necessary, but perhaps we need to initiate a conversation with the GSA to make sure that they continue with that policy, that it be maintained and not be torn down should they sell it. But I don't know who that conference, who in our, Chris, who in our, who in our staff would have that, who'd be able to reach out to the GSA?
Yeah, we could, gosh, any of us could. So, you know, I could look to Ben Rogers as a relationship, Anthony as a relationship, his staff does. Probably in the context of historic preservation, we'd run it through DSD.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And if we could maybe do that sooner than later, I just think it's really important. There's a lot of history there, we can get all the documentation that we need. Actually, back in October of 2018, there was an excellent workshop conducted by the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. I went to it, and then they did a tour of the building. They had about 60 people actually show up for the workshop at the South Side Cultural Arts Center. It was very, very informative. That building, when it was built, cost 17 million, and it was one of the first structures that was actually completed under a federal program, the Living Buildings Program in Florida. So there's a lot of history there. It's certainly is almost like you would consider that, I think, a public square. When people rally or protest or whatever, that is a very significant corner besides just the building. But I just would love to see us have those conversations, Mayor, with the federal government. Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie, did you want to add something?
I just wanted some clarity, not that I'm questioning. You made the comment that it couldn't be torn down. What does that mean?
So the federal government had indicated during the conversations about the new federal courthouse that one of the provisions would be that, should they sell it, they would require that there would be a covenant that would run with the land, that they could not tear the building down. That's what they had indicated a couple years ago. I don't know if they still have that philosophy, but it's worth understanding what their point, what their perspective is at this point.
So they're saying when they, the government-- So they're saying, when they, when they sell that one?
Right.
The new buyer, they're going to put in the contract that they can't tear it down?
That's what they had once indicated. Yeah. Moving on to the Marine Advisory Board Communication. This is a draft of the meeting minutes. There was a motion made by the committee to ask the commission to support funding for the ongoing relationship with Clean Waterways, the firm that uses protein skimmers to remove impurities from the city's waterways. It was passed unanimously. And the second motion doesn't indicate what the motion is. So I don't know what that's about. The third communication is the Community Services Board. This was to ask the City Commission to see whether or not their board could meet virtually as an option to participation. And the vote passed five to two. Anyone have any comments on that?
I thought we talked about this about a month ago. I think it's important that we just all get back in person at this point.
You think it's important that what?
We all just meet in person at this point, boards, staff, all of us.
Okay, so we'll just leave the policy the way it is. The fourth communication we have is the Beach Improvement District. The bid has to do with our parking rates and coming up with an event, a flat rate. Did everyone see that? Any thoughts on that? So there should be, there should be a lower rate for sponsored events? I wonder if that includes the boat show?
With the way the code is written today, Mayor, we do have the flat rate. I do have some authorities with that flat rate. The maximum it can be is $30 per day. When we do set a per-day rate, we do send a commission memo out. So you are aware of the fact that we've gone to a flat rate. I have the ability to administratively reduce that down to $10 a day. And a lot of factors, at least, go into my decision-making and doing that.
This is just for the garage?
This is just for generally parking at the beach. That's not scooped up by the event itself. So if you take, let's take Tortuga, for example. They use so many of the parking spaces out there that there's really not that many left for public consumption. People have to get to Tortuga a different way. And so we've historically had $10 flat rate for Tortuga. They made application for that this year to reduce the 30 to 10, and I honored that request. So I think that communication was authored with Tortuga in mind before the Beach Board knew, yeah, before the bid knew that that actually occurred. So that may act, that communication may be on the heels of something that's already been solved.
So let me ask you something. How do you have a $30 flat rate for a street parking meter? How does that work?
Go to Ben Rogers. I think it's all generated through pay-by-phone, but we'll see what he...
It's pay-by-phone?
We'll let the guy that knows exactly how it's done answer the question.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. So Mayor, each event, we identify the locations we're going to charge. And the majority of the events on the barrier island, we do not raise the rates on the on-street meters just in those places that we have multi-parking space pay stations.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Yes.
I'm not advocating this, but I've said it before. I go to some cities and towns in Palm Beach, Orlando. And on the weekends, select from six to like two in the morning, parking is free. I guess to attract the nightlife or promote the entertainment districts. And I just notice I see it more and more when I go up to other places. And I'm not advocating they would do that, but I thought it was pretty interesting that during those hours, there was no fee for the meters. But from like regular hours, say up until five o'clock, you're paying. After five, that crowd is coming to the nightlife.
So you're suggesting that be free during the day, and then at five o'clock, do we start charging?
No, it's the other way around.
The other way around?
Weekends. I guess they're trying to attract people to the downtown. And I see it more and more places I go. I don't know what that trend is. Have you seen it?
Yeah, I've seen just different models all over the place. All we would really try to do in the parking fund, as you know, is manage to a certain revenue so we can balance the parking fund. Which means if we go to free at certain times of the day, then likely the per-hour rate during the day would be elevated somewhat so that we struck that balance and could still balance the fund. But yeah, I could see how that would be a great incentive to take the downtown area and say, gosh, let's bring people off the barrier island, bring them to our downtown. They don't have to worry about paying to park to come. Yeah, I could see that as a definite attraction.
Evening hours, huh?
Correct. No, I could see that, yes. Definite evening attraction.
Well, I've always been in favor of, you know, reduce parking rates to encourage visitors. So I don't know. I mean, what would be, I mean, does the commission want to move in that direction? You want to examine it? What are your thoughts?
Didn't we recently increase the parking rates?
You just increased it?
Yeah.
It is.
Right. I'm just saying.
But no one listened to you then.
Right, right.
And they didn't listen to me either, because I voted against it as well.
As you look at how we grow in the future, this could be one of those things that bring more...
Sure. I think it was a, if I remember right, it was a funding to fund the parking fund. I mean, there's...
The bonds, too.
Remind me of the bonds.
Yeah, that fund is structured on spending obligations. And so it's not subsidized by the general fund.
Subsidized actions.
So I could ask, I mean, Ben's obviously our staff professional when it comes to parking rate setting and how it has to balance out. We could run some different pro formas and see what it looks like to have reduced parking in the evening hours in certain parts of the town, reduce parking in the evenings in our entertainment districts.
Yeah, I think it's worth...
I could think of a whole bunch of different ways we could break it down.
Well, the thing is, do we need to incentivize? I don't see that as an issue, because we have plenty of people there who come to, you know, to our beach. It's not like we're, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to bring people there. They're already there, and they're willing to pay it. That's the thing. So...
I see these other cities. I'm saying, they're just as busy as we are, but why are they doing that? What is the rationale?
He'll bail me out, and put some, put some professional comment here to my narrative.
I mean, I think every situation is unique and different. And as you alluded to, the expenditures that we had, to remind the commission, one of the reasons we increased the rates two years ago was because we have some repair and maintenance needs at some of our facilities, large capital items. And so we're working through a solicitation right now that we assume will be, you know, a couple of million dollars just to make some repairs in one of the garages. We're also rolling out an improvement plan. So all these surface slots that have not been necessarily maintained at a certain level are going to be getting milled, resurfaced. You're going to see landscaping improvements, irrigation improvements. We're really going to upgrade our services. So that will be rolling out in the next eight to 12 months, the first slots will. And again, that's a result of the increased parking rates.
All right. So money well spent. Thank you.
Mayor, I think to incentivize people, if you would just, you and Commissioner McKenzie, would let people know when you're out on the town, that would incentivize people to come out, mingle.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think it'd be positive.
What's that?
We've got, if you would share with people when you're going out on the town, that would be a big incentive for people to come out and see you, interact, mix and mingle. That was the idea there.
Who's going to write that memo?
I'll work on it.
Finally, we have a quick memo from the Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee in which the oppose, the committee opposes any bridge crossing the New River for the commuter rail in downtown Fort Lauderdale. A roll call vote passed eight to zero. Okay, thank you, Infrastructure Task Force, for the support. Quick CF1 emergency purchase for the Fort Lauderdale Aquatic Center. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? Do we need to vote on that?
No, you don't. This is just a formality of, I have to notice you if we have to make one of these types of purchases. This is a small amount, and we talked about it during the agenda briefing yesterday, to allow the work to continue with the vendor that's doing it. It would cost a whole lot more money to try to switch for the small amount of work.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So I've been sitting here, I remember the first night when I was sworn in. We started some projects, and the aquatic center was one of them. I'm determined out in 24, but I'm just curious to know where we are with total, our total budget there to date and expected finishes on the aquatic center, other than the new pieces that we...
Other than east and west? So you're looking at the pools, the dive tower, and basically the south building?
Right, not what we...
Not the other, not the east-west buildings, right?
No, I'm just curious.
I have that calculation. I could have told you off the cuff when we were going to take delivery of those parts of the project, but I'll have to have that calculated.
Can you get that?
Absolutely.
About 40 million, I think it is.
That was in the ballpark.
Forty-eight, I think now.
I was going to say 42, so we're all in that same 10, 10 range, but I'll have it calculated.
All right, so he can get that for you. I'm curious to know, too. Okay, so moving on, the main event today is Business One, Broward County Transportation Surtax Update. We have Brian Coletka, who is from the MPO, along with, along with?
Mr. Todd Brower.
Welcome.
Yeah, Mayor, let me hand it over to Ben Rogers first, real quick, before the MPO speaks, just to frame what the purpose of today's discussion is, and then we'll turn it over to the MPO and their consulting team.
Okay.
Thank you. So Commissioner, the MPO is here today. If you recall, the city manager authored a memo in early January talking about some of the concerns with the surtax projects, giving an update on where our projects are at, and really just setting the table for the 2022 calendar year. Some of the city's interpretations and understandings of what's eligible, what's prioritized, and what's feasible is not clear. And so we've invited the MPO today, whose role is to facilitate the application process, review and rank the applications, to share some information with the commission and with staff on what this next calendar year looks like, and then take any questions you may have on the surtax program.
Okay, great, thank you. Good afternoon, honorable Mayor and Commissioners. It's a privilege to be here, frankly. So today, I want to give you a presentation of what we're actually doing for the county, what we've been hired to do. So 2022 is actually going to be a little bit different than it had been in the past. And it has to do with the fact that last Thursday, the county announced that they are going to move all of their Cycle One projects into the five-year plan to be funded. According to the Second Amendment, they had to do Cycle One before they did anything that's new. So since all of the projects have been programmed into their five-year plan, that means that this year's round will actually only be made up of new projects. So...
Hold on. Sorry. Sorry. I'm going to be the slow one on this, asking a lot of questions. So tell me your name again?
Brian Coletka with the Broward MPO.
Brian, okay, Brian with MPO.
So Brian used to be a city commissioner with the town of Davie.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. And he transferred, transitioned over to the MPO because he was such an aggressive and interested public servant that they saw, they saw his talent. We need this man over here.
Mayor, there's a future for you.
Yeah, exactly. That explains why I haven't gotten a job.
He cared a lot more than the two of us in the name.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So anyway, yeah, so he, yeah, he's a hot shot over there.
Awesome. All right, good. Well, I'm glad we got a rock star here. So just, so as you're describing things like cycles, if you could just, what is a cycle? What does that mean? Just give me, give me some of those basics, if you want mine, Brian. Thank you.
Sure. So it started in 2020, which was when they actually hired us to rank the new projects. And all of what they call Cycle One was all of the projects that was thrown from every municipality that potentially could have used surtax dollars. And what they all decided, and the "all" meaning each of the city commissions individually, along with Broward County and the Broward MPO, decided that the top 110 projects would be referred to as Cycle One from that moment on, and that they were guaranteed to get funding if they were eligible under the law. So the Second Amendment came along last year. It was adopted by all the 29 partners, Broward County and the Broward MPO. And it basically acknowledged that all of Cycle One, those 110 projects, would be funded before they funded new projects. And so now that has come to fruition, and all 110 have been funded. So now, when we collect new projects that are going to be submitted by your transportation team through our website's portal, those will be ranked, and that ranked list will be given to Broward County in June. We advertise the rubric, so how many points each project gets is advertised, so you can maximize your strategy. And then they're going to provide us with a budget of 10% of the surtax money to use and to fund those top projects that are ready to go.
So Brian, let me just, let's put this in perspective so we all understand. When the surtax was passed, Broward County Board of County Commissioners said that the cities, the 31 cities, would divvy up 10%. And Broward County would reserve onto itself 90% of the money, okay? So the question is, of these 100, 100-some-odd projects, are they coming from the 10% or are they coming from the 90%?
From 10.
So whatever money is that is going to be allocated to the cities, that money is only coming from the 10% portion of the surcharge. Does everyone understand that?
Okay. And how many out of those 110 projects are Fort Lauderdale projects?
We have several.
We actually had more than...
I'm being told eight.
Eight? Can you count on two hands, Ben?
We had the most, I thought.
Yes, sir.
We did.
Had about 195 projects in the first 510.
We did. We had the most.
So you had about 200 of the 500, the other 28 cities made up the other 300.
Is the county, is the county indicating what they are doing with their first two years of money?
So they have purchased some land. They bought 350 traditional diesel buses. They bought 10 electric buses. They have put out to bid for design of a Broward County Transit Master Plan that they're going to present to the MPO Board in March, February or March.
So they bought three, about 360 buses?
Correct.
Okay.
What, sorry, again, I'm going to be slow. The, you said the top 110 projects were Cycle One, then you talked about 500 total projects. Are those the projects proposed after the top 110?
So those are projects that weren't considered guaranteed funding. It doesn't mean they won't get funding, but they weren't guaranteed funding. So in our portal, we did, is we just reserved those projects that didn't make Cycle One, and your employee just had to push submit to resubmit it for consideration and ranking.
Okay. And so, okay, so we've resubmit, so how many have we resubmitted in the second tranche, Ben Rogers?
It was about 20.
About 20? Okay. So 20 resubmitted. Okay, great. And so we're 20 of four or 500 so far?
So last year, a total of 189 projects were submitted, and you all submitted about 20.
And we were 20. Do...
Sure.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And just for clarification, Commissioner Sorenson, that was 20 that we applied for. Of those 20, 18 of them were not approved or pushed back for more information or clarification for eligibility. And I think one was cleared for, or two were cleared for eligible projects, but they were not ranked high enough to receive guaranteed funding.
So Ben, out of the 110 that were funded for the first cycle, how many Fort Lauderdale projects out of those 110 that will be funded?
There were eight.
Eight out of the 110?
Yes. There might have technically been nine, but we merged one project because it had overlapping scope. And of that, recently, when we submitted for a project funding agreement with the county, they were deemed ineligible because they did not have roadway improvements as part of the scope.
Okay. Do we know the total dollar amount of those eight that were funded?
I can, I can pull that information for you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
And then also, Ben, if we can have the name, what those are, like, a list of those, that'd be great. Thank you. Is this, Brian, let me use kind of a college term... Is this, Brian, let me use kind of a college term, is this a rolling decision, early decision? How, how does the application process work? If that, does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
So, yes, we uh basically.
After the top hundred and ten?
Yeah. Uh all projects need to be resubmitted that are already in our database, so we chose to submit twenty out of all the ones, a hundred and ninety-five. Uh those were the twenty that were submitted. Uh all these cities are treated exactly the same in that respect. Uh last year, at the very end, it went to an eligibility review with the county attorney's office. This year, we're doing it before you submit, so they input their project, it gets an initial review, and then they can finish inputting the data uh for each project.
Okay, so in twenty-twenty-one, a hundred and eighty-nine projects were submitted. Of those hundred and eighty-nine, twenty of those were ours. All but eighteen of those of our twenty got rejected. Two were cleared, but shaky or, no, they're good.
Yeah, they're good.
They're good. How many other projects in total out of those hundred and eighty-nine in twenty-twenty-one were approved?
Uh forty-three.
Forty-three total approved. So we were two out of, we were two projects out of forty-three total in twenty-twenty-one.
Correct.
Okay, great. So that brings our number up to ten total projects at this point. That have been approved. No.
So, yes, they approved, but eight of the ten are guaranteed funding, the other two are not.
So the two in twenty-twenty-one, that's what I meant by shaky, the two in twenty-twenty-one were approved, but not guaranteed funding.
Correct. They were not funded.
They were not funded.
Correct.
So what's good is it to be approved but not funded? What does that get us?
Nothing.
Okay, cool.
Good question, Ben.
We were required to do the.
Eating's over.
Yeah, thank you. We're narrowing that down.
Sorry, go ahead, yeah.
So we were required to do the process even though it was kind of moot. It's outlined in our.
Okay. And why was it mute moot, or why were, were any of the forty-three funded?
None.
None were funded?
Correct.
Okay, and that's because?
We had already used our minimum annual guarantee, the ten percent, to recommend Cycle One projects.
Oh, okay. So almost like twenty-twenty-one funding was used for twenty-twenty-approved projects?
Correct.
Almost.
That's exactly what it is.
Okay, twenty-twenty-one. Okay, so now. Okay, so now we're in twenty-twenty-two, and are those hundred and eighty-nine projects, so city municipalities have to resubmit the hundred and eighty-nine?
Correct.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, great, for consideration. And do, do we think we have funding, the county has funding for tho- for some projects in twenty-twenty-two?
Correct, yes, but it's, it will go into the fifth year of the five-year plan, which is twenty-twenty-seven funding.
Because there are others that were, that were um scheduled for second year and third year and fourth year.
Oh.
Right?
Yep.
So, so this goes to the back of the line.
Oh, so the, so there are certain projects that were approved for twenty-twenty-two already?
The ones that were approved, and approved for funding will get funding, the ones that were not approved, as Mister Coletka says, will, can be resubmitted, but they go to the back of the line.
Okay. How many projects are approved for twenty-twenty-two funding?
Uh it depends on the cost. So i- if they're very expensive projects, there will be fewer of them. If they're less expensive, there will be more. We will have approximately thirty million dollars to spend for twenty-twenty-seven.
For all thirty-one cities?
Correct.
Sorry, about thirty million, you said for twenty-twenty-seven?
Yes.
And how about for twenty-twenty-two? Is twenty-twenty-two considered twenty-twenty-seven?
So in general, there was thirty-three million per year uh funding for projects each year of the five-year plan, so that's twenty-twenty-two, three, four, and five.
Okay. And do we, so we don't know what projects are gonna be funded for twenty-twenty-two?
Correct.
Or it's to be, it's to be determined?
Correct.
Well, it's the fiscal year versus.
Yeah.
Which, sure, which.
So.
Means what?
We are going to rank the projects this year for twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Will be known as Cycle Three. When they give us the budget on how much, then we will look at which one of those projects we recommend for funding in twenty-twenty-seven. So they're using Department of Revenue forecasting to tell us how much is the total surtax collected, and then how much is the ten percent that we have for our budget. It will be approximately forty million dollars, a little bit less than that. Uh and then about thirteen will come off the top for the community shuttle, because they now fund that through surtax, so that you subtract thirteen million from the forty. Uh and that's, the remainder is what we will have as our budget to recommend projects.
Are there projects that are slated for twenty-twenty-two approval? It sounds like it's, it's still open, it's still. Any, all projects are under consideration for twenty-twenty-two.
Correct.
Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Including the hundred and eighty-nine?
If they're resubmitted.
If they resubmitted?
Yes.
Great. Um and that would be the same process for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, resubmitting if people get denied, okay?
Correct.
Great, yeah, go ahead.
May the, yeah, because this is where it gets a little confusing, and, and I, I do want to try to bring a little brevity to this, but also explanation.
Yeah.
So when we're talking about.
What's your name?
Uh, sorry, my name is Todd Brower with White House Group. I'm contracted under Broward MPO.
Todd Whitehouse Group. Okay, great, thanks, Todd.
No, absolutely, and, because this is a great question, because it's one of the hardest things that we have in describing the process. Because when we talk about an application year of twenty-twenty, it means we're collecting projects. But when they actually get programmed for funding is part of the county's five-year plan. So that Cycle One that we discussed, the one through one-ten, that actually filled the five-year plan, which was from twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and then we used last year's process to say, okay, if you're Cycle One, here's what you can do for twenty-twenty-six. But now what's interesting about it is it's opening up, now that Cycle One's getting done, when we say, hey, we're collecting projects for twenty-twenty-two, we're really collecting those projects for the twenty-twenty-seven year. So the county actually has a five-year plan that's drawn out, that's filled with projects. Now, the caveat to that, though, is that some of those projects may not be ready, or when they come to funding agreements, may not be deemed eligible. So they come out of that five-year plan, and other projects have an opportunity then to move up. So it's very much a shifting, that's why I like that you use that college application, because it's like somebody defers, it opens that slot up, and then another project can come into it. But it's important to see when the money's allocated versus when we do our application series.
Yes.
Did that help?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, that, that helps, and the funding, so an approved application in twenty-twenty-two would be funded in twenty-twenty-seven.
Correct, that's correct.
And then shovels in the ground, year or two, or whatever after that.
But the caveat that's interesting to this, though, is again, I think you're gonna see a lot of Cycle One projects come out of the five-year plan. So even though we might say it's twenty-twenty-seven, there is opportunity to move forward. So I tell everybody, the big secret is get into the five-year plan, because things can move if we've determined that your project's actually ready and another project isn't. So projects can move within that five-year plan. That's your first hurdle, is getting that five-year plan.
And the, again, the year we're on in that first five-year plan?
Is twenty-twenty-seven. But they did just update the five-year plan that covered twenty-twenty-two, three, four, five, and six. And so they moved some projects forward, including some projects that we actually hadn't done a readiness review yet, and then they moved into the plan. So that's what I'm saying, there's great opportunity, that first hurdle, getting that plan, and then they can shift, depending on the readiness of the project.
So maybe you should explain what readiness is, and then explain why the two got kicked back when they were already approved to move forward.
And I, I would also like to understand more about the eligibility, because my understanding is the definition has changed.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna cover that?
Cover that with readiness.
Do you want to do that one now, or do you want to do this one first? Uh what order do we want to do?
I was trying to, I think it's gonna help.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so this is just showing uh that we rank the process, we do two things, we rank and we recommend. And basically, up until now, we had to recommend within the minimum annual guarantee, that ten percent, we had to go to Cycle One, because that's what the Second Amendment, all the cities agreed to. Now that all Cycle One projects have finished, we now can use that minimum annual guarantee for new projects that are submitted. And I, even though eighteen of your projects were deemed ineligible, we now have a clear, defined parameter of what is eligible and what is not eligible, and we've already started working with your staff to change the scope of those projects to make them eligible next time they go through the review. That's the important part, because if, if they're ineligible, they don't get ranked. And you have to have it ranked in order to get recommended, and you have to be in the five-year plan before you're guaranteed funding.
So what makes it eligible?
So it, you, there are three ways to get eligibility. You can create a new road or a bridge. You can do a capacity increase, which means that you're expanding the number of lanes. Uh and you can also have uh what they call traffic calming measures, which uh we are actually using as the support for one of your projects known as the breakers to get funding from surtax. And then there's uh, so here's the new roadway bridge, widen existing roadway or traffic calming, and in our portal, when you go to the website, it's a dropdown menu where you have to choose which type of project it is. Then, after you choose one of those acceptable projects, the other components are then eligible for funding, like ADA, bike lanes, drainage, uh even a resurfacing.
Can I ask a question real quick over here? This is Chris. So that, I guess fundamentally is one of the issues I have with these criteria, is that uh the enhancement or the expansion of a road or the creation of a road, that's not gonna happen in Fort Lauderdale, because we're a city that's built. So unless we knock something down, um we contribute a lot to the surtax, but not every one of our transportation projects that would seem to be surtax-eligible are gonna have a, are gonna have a traffic calming component. And so I can't get there by increasing or creating new, so we have to try to get there through this artificial backdoor method of traffic calming. That doesn't work for our projects, and I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile that.
So I think that if you saw the full list of eligible calming solutions, you could find something that could work for your project. And that's what our goal is when we work with your staff.
Yeah, but there's, there's, there's more than just project. There's projects over the term of thirty years. So, you know, figuring out how to get a project today through the back door into being eligible, we, we can't do that for thirty years. And, and recognize anything that is even close to what this community would contribute to that surtax over, over thirty years.
Uh I'm gonna disagree. I think if you used all the tools in your toolbox, you could make a project eligible.
So let's go back to that slide. Can you put the slide back up?
Toolbox.
That, oh, no, the back, no, 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 you, you, next one, right, next one. The one we had, the list, you just passed it.
And how's it work? Brian, can our staff sit down with you and say, hey, Brian, alright, so here's what we're working on, here's how we think this could fit, can you give us feedback?
Stop. So, wait a minute, Ben, before you go, so as the city managers indicated, you know, we can't go wide, because we're already a built-out community. So the other transportation-related improvements, so we can become eligible for this money if we have ADA accommodations, bike lanes, drainage, fiber optics, which we're not engaged in, that's the county thing, guardrails, I'm not quite sure when we ever put guardrails in, plants, sidewalks, signage, sign walls, and street lighting. That doesn't amount to a whole lot of money when it comes to comparing how much money we contribute to this fund. So that's the frustration we have. You know, how many daffodils can we plant to really make up for the, you know, the, the, the amount that we feel that we should be entitled to? Are we collecting sales tax? Thirty percent goes into this fund. Are we collecting sales tax just to en- enhance the roadways for Weston, Cooper City, and, and some of the western um cities that, that, you know, are still, you know, building out? That's the frustration we have. It's not a question, it's just a rhetorical statement, you know, how do we reconcile this problem?
So you can use the traffic calming projects. Uh it's not just speed bumps, there are other elements that you can do, uh reconfigurations. You can find something that is acceptable to the community, and you can also find things that are going to qualify the project.
But tho- those aren't imperatives in our city, you know, traffic calming is not an imperative in our city. We're, we have a lot of traffic, we don't have problems with speed, except motorcycles, but, you know, we don't have speeding issues. We don't have big traffic calming uh uh challenges. It kind of takes care of itself. So we have nee- we have to increase capacity, and we have methods to increase capacity, which don't seem to come within the purview of this, of these definitions. And so the frustration that we have is that here we are, donor city, and, um and I know you didn't make up these rules, and you're just the messenger here, but the point is that there has to be a way to reconcile the contribution that we are continuing to make towards this fund, and still be able to benefit in order to improve our city, to create um ways in which to reduce traffic, ways in which to accommodate the pathways of, of, of travel, whether they be by car or bike or site or pedestrian. And, and to still be able to, to make up the full complement of, of contribution that we make towards this fund. That's what we're saying.
Understood.
What's the?
Oh, sure.
So figure that out and get back to us.
Matt should do have some, some comment here. Now, and Brian, I, I can have some canter here, although Ben and Gail are going to cringe when I say that, because we have been working with them. So am I, okay, very good, good. So we get to, we get to talk about it as, as Todd would talk about it, because I'm gonna start with, it's the messaging is a mess. So if you want to know why this is troubling to all of you, is because there isn't a connection of message about how this money works. So what I'm showing you here is the overall surtax, because that's the concern, right, is the thirty percent, what's the one penny doing? And the difficulty is, is that the role of the MPO, when you look at this slide, is actually one quarter of ten percent. So when we come to talk to you, it's a very small portion that we're able to describe of what is part of this program, which is roadway-specific. However, the surtax in general is much larger. Ninety percent of it goes towards things like fixed guideway, buses, roadways. But where the messaging fell apart, too, is that beginning piece. So to take you on the journey of this, is when the county was looking to get this passed and working with all of you, the question came out to say, give us your transportation projects, but there was no message to say, what does transportation mean? So Florida statute defines it as four things: roadways, buses, fixed guideway, and on-demand, which is basically community shuttles. So that was the box in which the county had to view the transportation surtax. Though when the Second Amendment comes along, it was, okay, the cities in general don't manage the bus system, transit, they do community shuttles, but we can do that as a large bill. And so then they looked at roadways. So the thing is, is your surtax money is going towards, or will go towards, a lot more improvements. The problem is, is there's a disconnect between you all getting that messaging to us, the MPO, to say, hey, these are the suggestions, because BCT is going to be, they're currently buying buses, they're looking at fixed guideways, so all of that money will improve your communities, you will absolutely be a part of that.
But Todd, we can't apply for money for the ninety percent.
Exactly, and that's part of the challenge that we have. And so what Brian and I are trying to do is to show the county, hey, look, we can manage this quarter of ten percent well. We should be able to help out, particularly since the MPO looks at it from a regional standpoint, to how do we get the application process improved, so that way the cities can then notify you of, these are what our actual needs are, because we've relayed that message to the ca- to the county as well, saying, our concern is, is anyone east of ninety-five's gonna run into trouble because you're built out. So that was one of the challenges that we saw, so we said, okay, well, what is then the opportunity? Excuse me. What is the opportunity for federal statute or state statute, and then the Second Amendment? And we saw that traffic calming is a problem, as, as a, one solution where we're working with Ben and Gail then to say, okay, breakers, which was deemed ineligible before, could be eligible with those kind of treatments, because that becomes the trigger. Now, that still doesn't solve all your problems, I agree with you, you've got transit, you've got a lot of other things that you need to look at. But right now, you're exactly right, Mister Mayor, there is no direct connection that allows an advocate to talk about your needs of the city in the other ninety percent. And that messaging has got to change, because right now, all we know is, is there's three hundred buses bought, and that's about it.
And that's about it?
Yeah.
What about the other billion? I mean, buses don't cost that much. So if we're generating thirty, I don't know what the number was, twenty billion dollars over thirty years, okay? I mean, we're not spending the money.
That's right. Right now, that's an escrow.
It's an escrow, yeah.
Yeah, essentially, it's, it's not being utilized.
But is there a plan for the use of the money? Are we gonna be someday, uh some, someday someone gonna tell us, you know, how this money's? how this money is going to be used? Because in the cities, we can figure it out. So has the county come up with a strategic plan to inform us how they plan to spend the money?
My understanding is, as Mr. Colak had mentioned, is in February or March of, well, I guess this month or next month, the county will be presenting that to the MPO as to what that plan is for fixed guideway and other improvements.
Will it be at the next MPO meeting?
Uh, it'll be either February or March, February tenth or March tenth.
Okay.
How many buses did it buy? Three hundred, he says?
Three sixty.
Three sixty, three fifty.
That's sixty million dollars right there.
It's not a billion.
I'm saying, but just give me a.
I know, I get the number. I'm just saying, we're talking about eight hundred million a year.
Yeah. I'm, I'm surprised only ten were electric out of that.
We can use some of that.
Surprising.
That go through our city.
Uh, speaking, can we go back to, um, the eight projects? I, I believe Steve asked about it too, like what we have, what is funded? And then I have a couple of questions, more questions too. What, what will the county be using the, the three hundred and fifty acres for that they bought? Is it one parcel or do they buy parcels throughout the county? Do we know what they're using it for?
Uh, so one of the parcels that was recently purchased, um, they had originally, they were going to do a, a rail maintenance facility for it because it's near the BBNT Center.
Okay.
Uh, now, uh, for the short term, they're going to be using rapid bus transit.
Hold, sorry, Brian, a rail maintenance for what?
For the new rail that's coming in in twenty years.
They, they had intended, they had entertained the idea of putting in, uh, rail throughout Broward County and having the terminus be the BBNT Center.
Okay, great. So.
Like a light rail system? Like a light rail system?
They didn't make that decision.
With some type of, of railroad?
Right. They call it premium transit.
Okay, great. So for SRTAX dollars, then we can spend it on rail?
Ninety, that's the ninety percent.
Not all of it.
Not all of what?
So not all of it will qualify. So if it's rail lines, if it's the actual trains and passenger cars themselves, uh, or a maintenance facility, the answer is yes. Uh, they have, uh, opined that stations cannot be built with the SRTAX dollars.
Okay, but rail lines and, uh, surrounding infrastructure can be?
Yes, including platforms.
Excellent, and tunnels?
And land, okay.
Uh, I haven't seen an opinion related to tunnels.
But in, you're saying infrastructure, land, okay.
Anything that would increase capacity would qualify, correct?
Correct.
So if, if we have to go, if we have to go underground to increase.
Great, increase capacity. Because again, the county bought land for rail. So if we're investing similarly in rail, appropriate. Okay. Great. Sorry, go ahead, Vice Mayor, I just want to clarify.
The third avenue and Andrews Avenue, the, the pairing, is that in the queue? Because that'll just be a bus circulating, right?
Uh, good question. The, the one-way pairing downtown, is that, is that our, on our list? Do you know?
Yeah, so to refresh everyone on cycle one, which is the first hundred and ten projects.
Thank you, thanks, Ben, for doing that.
We were, we were awarded or ranked well, uh, for four projects. Uh, ranked twentieth was safety improvements for Northwest Fifteenth Avenue. Ranked thirty-second was street lighting improvements for Northwest Fifteenth Avenue. Both of those are sunrise to Mills Pond Park.
I'm sorry, Ben, I, you, is this cycle one?
This is cycle one, so of the.
Approved.
Of the hundred and ten that were ranked.
Right, the eight we got approved. It's what you're listing now.
Yep.
Okay, great, sorry, thanks.
Uh, ranked thirty-eighth was one-way pairs.
Okay.
And ranked, uh, sixty-third was sidewalk, new sidewalk connections, which was recently deemed ineligible.
So the one-way pair, that's just for design and, and just for the design work, correct?
Correct. And it's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for a feasibility planning study, of which we've been working with the MPO over the last month or two to figure out if we can utilize a software program that the MPO is, is working and investing on versus doing a traditional, um, data collection.
Okay.
So hopefully, if, once the design work is done, the buses that the county bought will be able to operate and they'll be able to pay for the operation of this one-way pairing as well with the SRTAX, right? It's capital and operation? Like when we say buses, it's both?
Yeah, so I'd have to defer to, to Brian on that because I, I don't have any.
Hopefully, you would think it's both, right? If you buy buses, you have to operate them.
To be honest with you, by the time this would ever get built, um, I would hope that there would be the invention of, of, uh, uh, driverless vehicles. Like there would be, the buses would be autonomous vehicles. And we're not talking, you know, the technology is there, it's just a matter of, uh, implementing it. I know that Tesla is working on that. Um, so let's just say we're talking about a five-year cycle, um, between design and implementation. By that time, you know, the county might be interested in, you know, we never know. We never know what the county wants to do because there are new people always making decisions. But it would seem to me that forward-thinking that, you know, that, um, autonomous vehicles might be something we could, uh, we would consider. But anyway, that's.
Last question, and then Ben, this is more for you. I know we were working on the shuttle, bringing that back to the Galt. So hopefully, I think that made the list. So that's good. I don't know if it's final yet. And then it sounds like that, you know, the Galt traffic calming along the Galt Mile may qualify and maybe next to it, they could improve some of the sidewalks too. So something we can talk about later.
And what happened to the sidewalks that you said were then deemed ineligible? What, what made them fall off the list?
So I can have, um, the MPO confirm, but my understanding is that it was ra- ranked and recommended and put on this list and that the, the legal eligibility was not done at that time. And so we approved it, got it in order. And then that legal opinion came in, which made it ineligible. And that was what they were alluding to earlier about them changing the process, where we get the legal interpretation before we get the rank and, and award.
Who, who makes the legal opinion?
County attorney.
No, no, hold on a second.
Okay.
Uh, so it's one of the county attorneys. There's been two that have been issued the responsibility of SRTAX eligibility.
And they're saying sidewalk connections.
So.
Fit this criteria.
Uh, they, what they deemed ineligible was that it wasn't attached to one of those three elements that you have on the screen, that it wasn't a new roadway or bridge, it wasn't a widening and it wasn't a traffic calming. That if one of those elements were also present, then the sidewalks could accommodate that project.
So these other things don't matter if it's not new roadway or bridge, widening existing roadway or bridge, traffic calming projects. If it, if it didn't meet those three, these others don't matter.
Correct.
So the fiber optics got to go through the bridge or the widening of that roadway or through a traffic calming device.
Correct. That's absolutely correct.
So we should concentrate on these three items to, to drink from the SRTAX, um, first round. And if anything else happens, we go back for another penny, half a penny. We need to re, um, I guess title and define where this money is. I think this time, it just came out of the box. We, we, penny tax was passed and then we just kind of ran to figure out what we were going to do with it. And then the bigger piece of the pie ended up staying with the, uh, the pot holder.
Correct. But I do want to let you know that this Breakers project is actually coming from the ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
So the way that they deemed is if you have an important SRTAX project that doesn't meet one of these three criteria, the city manager can write a letter to MAP administration explaining the need for SRTAX dollars and, and what you bring to the table because you're bringing a, a match for that Breakers project and ask for some of the ninety percent.
Okay.
And you're one of three communities that have already reached out. And, uh, we actually had a meeting with Vice Mayor Lamar Fisher and Commissioner Glassman was in the meeting, uh, where that determination was to move forward with that ninety percent funding.
So no matter what we do here, to lobby, badger, shake, push, hold you upside down, nothing's going to change this criteria that's before us today.
Uh, it would take a Third Amendment to the SRTAX.
Third Amendment from whom?
From county and all twenty-nine municipal partners and Broward MPO.
Thank you so much for your time, sir.
Absolutely.
All right. Um, Brian, some more questions. Um, let's see. So sidewalk was not eligible. Did that then reduce the total overall projects from eight to seven or was that not included in the eight?
I believe it's eight to seven now.
Okay, so now we're down to seven. Okay, so Ben Rogers, can you just state those projects again? Because I didn't quite get all those. So give me the seven approved, please.
All right, so, and not to complicate the formula anymore, but cycle one of the hundred and ten has capital improvement projects. They also funded repair and maintenance projects. Both of those have different criteria sets in the path forward.
Got it.
So of the projects that we received.
Yep.
Again, the capital projects, ranked number twenty was Northwest Fifteenth Avenue Mobility Improvements.
For how much?
Uh, the initial, the construction was for two million.
Okay.
Ranked thirty-second was street lighting improvements for that same stretch on Northwest Fifteenth Avenue, at just shy of a million.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, I don't, we don't have to give us the ranking number, that doesn't matter.
Okay. Uh, the third one is, uh, one-way pair, safety improvements on Andrew Avenue. That is a planning phase for a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Okay, so that was not approved, that was just planning, that's not approved for actual construction?
So they earmarked future dollars for it, assuming that the project will go through all the phases. But right now, we have a hundred and ninety-five that's allocated. We have to submit a project funding agreement with the county. Uh, and then they would have to approve that for the funds to be used by the city.
Okay, for how much?
That's for a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
No, no, the, what's earmarked? What dollar amount?
Three years?
Yeah.
I'll have to, I'll have to pull that for you.
Okay. And Brian is earmarked the same as, it's not the same as approved, I'm assuming. So earmarked is just like, hopefully?
No, no, it's guaranteed to be, if it's deemed eligible, it will fund all phases.
It'll fund all phases.
So that's about two hundred thousand. We break it into what, we have like a fifteen percent and an eighty-five percent chunk. Uh, so whatever that funding is, two hundred thousand, you can extrapolate it to the eighty-five percent. And that's how much construction funding will be allocated for you.
Great, okay, so, okay, excellent.
So, uh, Commissioner Swanson's staff provided, uh, the, the breakdown on one-way pairs. It's a hundred and ninety-five thousand for planning, seven hundred and eighty thousand for design and five point, five million, five point six million for construction.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
The, uh.
That's three out of seven, I think, we have right now.
Yep. And the last capital project was the sidewalk connections, um, which was three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for design.
Now, is this the one that was denied?
That's the one that was recently, uh, deemed ineligible.
Okay, so I don't forget that because that's not.
That's the capital projects. On the repair and maintenance projects, there's South Ocean Drive Bridge, which is a construction project at two point one million dollars.
Okay.
There's West Lake Drive Bridge Maintenance, value, construction phase at one point six million. We had a sidewalk repair and maintenance, uh, project that was also deemed ineligible. And that was at one point two million. And then mill and resurfacing of the Finger Isles along Los Al, Los Olas and that's construction at five hundred thousand.
Okay, so, great, thanks. So ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. So fifteen million dollars is what we were basically awarded in the first cycle?
Correct.
Total, about. And how much in total was awarded in the first cycle? Maybe, Brian?
So I'm being told sixty-five million.
Sixty-five million? Okay, great, thanks. And then what is the, I, I didn't quite follow this, Brian. The, uh, transportation out of the ten percent, uh, MPO is responsible for a quarter because that's to, for roadways or explain that quarter you were describing. And then what's the other three quarters?
So up in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, these are the four uses that that ten percent can be funding.
Okay.
Uh, you got the Community Shuttle Service, when they take care of all of the bill. It used to be a two-to-one split, but now they pay for all of it. Uh, they take that off of the top ten percent. They have rehab and maintenance, uh, that they have about sixty projects in the hopper that they have agreed to fund for that.
And who's they, the county?
The county.
Okay.
And then, uh, they have a small contingency fund, uh, for cost overruns. So, you know, with inflation, it's sometimes difficult to get the true actual cost of construction five years down the road. So they put in, uh, what I've been told is about one point two million dollars annually that will go to cost overruns for any construction project. And finally, the only part that we're responsible for is the capital projects, the one that's boxed. Uh, and we rank those after they're submitted. And then we recommend within the minimum annual guarantee. And this is showing that last year, our budget was nineteen and a half million to recommend projects.
Okay, great. And what's the revenue draw from Fort Lauderdale for cycle one?
Um, I know that that data is available, but it would just be pure guess.
Okay. Um. That's all good. If you can get that to me, I'm just interested to see what that, what that number looks like, um, whenever. That'd be great, thanks. Um, and you said, if, and again, if I was tracking right, you're saying, hey, if a project is not approved, the city manager could write a letter to the MAP admin or?
MAP, yeah.
MAP Administrator.
Um, advancement program administrator, which is Mrs. Gretchen Cassini.
Okay, and basically say, hey, we know we're, we're denied, but gosh darn it, we've got a great project and.
It's a great project, it's important, has these benefits.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, we would like to use the ninety percent above the minimum annual guarantee.
Okay.
Which is. Yeah, it must be eligible. So there are ineligible parts of the Breakers project. So we're going to let you use your dollars to pay for the ineligible components and then the SRTAX dollars to pay for the rest.
Okay, got it, great. And it's, maybe this is already happening, but it sounds like, are you and/or Todd able to sit with our city team and say, all right, for twenty-twenty-two, um, we're here to help, uh, here's what I would suggest and so forth and so on? I'm seeing yeses from, is that?
Yep, we've already met once.
Good to do that, we're already.
Yeah.
Great.
Sorry, I forgot.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, that's awesome, thank you. And I think we'll continue, that, that help would be, uh, fantastic going forward. Chris, how's, what's your, I know you gave your feedback earlier. How, what's going on in your brain as you're hearing all this? What are you thinking?
I mean, I think it's a tremendously bureaucratic process that's going to result in a very disproportionate distribution of dollars across the county, if you want to know what I really think.
Yeah.
You know, I think there needs to be an understandable process. I don't think there is yet. Uh, there needs to be better marketing. I don't think there is yet. There needs to be a better message. I don't think there is yet. We can't have projects that are eligible and then all of a sudden become ineligible because the rules changed along the way.
Right.
Um, I'm candidly quite frustrated with the SRTAX and what, uh, and, and how it's rolling out, um, for our city and, and for the county. And this presentation just further affirms that. I mean, very honestly, I, I haven't gotten any clarity today as to how we proceed and, and, and do better for our city other than try to back in through some traffic calming mechanism into a, into a process that's really designed to, to function for cities that aren't fully developed.
Okay.
That's my candid feedback.
What?
So why don't we let them continue with their presentation?
Yeah, well, I want to, I'd like Brian and Todd to, can you give us your feedback on that? Anything, what would, what would be your feedback to us or Chris's perspective or?
Um, I think that he has a full understanding of what's going on right now.
Okay.
I think everything he said was accurate.
Okay.
With one caveat, if I may, Chris, I'm gonna adjust a little bit.
Oh, I love when people disagree with me.
Well, it's not an agree, disagreement, but it's really an alignment, because one of the things that I do want to make sure of, though, is that it wasn't a changing definition, because you said it perfectly, that the messaging was off, very, very off. All of these Florida statutes, they all applied prior to it being voted in. The problem was, is when they went out to you, it wasn't, this is what transportation means. And as planners, city managers, Ben, and as engineers, when we think of transportation, we think about bike, we think about PED, we think about all these things. So there was a miscommunication about, oh, this is what the Florida statute says you can do versus what was being asked of you. So unfortunately, cycle one was a little bit of a mess, but to be fair, Jacksonville had the same issue. They passed a half penny infrastructure and a transportation tax. It took them a while to get there, but Chris, otherwise, I agree with everything that you've said, and if anything, I've really enjoyed working with your staff. They've been amazing, I've worked with them twice already, and we're getting there to get that messaging right, because you're, you're exactly right, we're taking your feedback, and we're gonna make this better. And I have to say, the county has been really open to when we're having these conversations, because I'm as frank with them as I am with you. I'm like, this is terrible, like, do you really want the whole eastern half of the county thinking this? No, how do we get better, better information and making it clear? That's why, that's why we wanted to be here today, we want to get that message out there that we're working on it, but you're right, we've got a long way to go.
Yeah, great, so I, hold on, Todd, yeah, so I appreciate that, great, and is your plan, you personally and White House, are, are you, your plan to remain part of this process going forward?
Yeah, so I'm on contract through the remainder of the Second Amendment, so in twenty twenty-four, they can decide whether they want to continue the relationship with the MPO. And we're on track for that.
Okay, so, and again, probably this is already happening, but the more you can help support Chris and like meet and talk and help, it's, I think, Chris, I'm just gonna change some of the vernacular from finding the back door to just, how can we, within the constructs, just find wins? How can we find successes, uh, in this process? Is that, is that fair, Chris? I mean, how we can?
It's, it's fair, you know, I mean, I've always talked about how we get to yes.
Get to yes.
I don't feel as though we're figuring, that's where I, I'd like us to get to, is how do we, how do we, how do we make better cities because of this amazing thing that's out there to fund transportation projects? Look, elevated or at-grade rail between here and the BBNT Center, by the time that project gets built, we'll be flying all over this county.
Right.
Um, and so, you know, I, I can foresee another wave project in our future where we have a modern-day streetcar that has wires in the sky, that at the time, we're ready to build it, we don't use wires anymore. And so, I think there just needs to be those open and candid discussions now, that so don't, don't build a dinosaur, but by the time we fund it, then, you know, we have discussions on vertical takeoff every day of the week, and, and, um, you know, I really think trans, the face of transportation has the notion, the wherewithal, the concepts of changing before we get to actual implementation.
Yeah, no, fair, completely agree, and can, would, would you meeting with Brian and Todd in some regular interval, uh, be, could, could that be part of the work plan, I guess?
You know, it absolutely could, I've got all the respect in the world for Ben Rogers and his team, and, uh, and I think, as was noted, um, we've got a tremendously professional staff. I do stay up to date through him, but.
Great.
You know, yes, time to time, just having a dialogue, I, I'm open to it, sometimes relationships matter, and these are relationship-based, and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and any of the comments that I've offered today is not intended to say that my relationship with Broward County is any worse than it, it was, I would say this to them, and have. And so, um, you know, I think there's some things they do really, really well, and then I, are there some things that I think we're stumbling on right now, and this is one of the stumbles.
Fair, okay, Ben, are you getting, is the working relationship between you and Brian and Todd, is that, is that working? Are you guys meeting enough, are you able to say, here's what we want to get to, can you help us figure out how to get there?
Yeah, and I've, I've heard the phrase tool in the toolbox used a few times, I think, and the cycle one, we didn't know there was a toolbox. Cycle two, we didn't know how to open the toolbox.
Yep.
Cycle three, we're, we're getting trained on the tools, as you've learned today, there's only three ways you can be eligible, and so now we're working through how we get eligible through one of those avenues. And so I wanted to commission to hear that firsthand from the MPO, since they're the rank and review body, because your projects like Los Olas Mobility, Lauder Trail, the tunnels, all of those things are not gonna really fit into one of those three categories, um, and therefore won't have surtax opportunities. I know that the public, uh, has expectations.
But hold on, Ben, let me just pause you there, so they might not fit into these three defined buckets, but we've got other possibilities, such as, we've got, the city manager can engage with the MAP administrator, right? As just an option.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure we're just thinking, okay, what are all the tools we could have? That's one, I know it's not as, as a simple of a pathway, but that's one. How else can we get creative with the understanding of traffic calming and what possibly could fit under there? So, and I know you're doing that, but I just want to make sure, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, that's exactly what we're doing, we're taking some of our existing projects, we're gonna redesign and retool to see if we can add traffic calming elements. Uh, Brian, uh, referred to the Breakers Avenue project, where we're gonna see if we can, uh, implement some of those traffic calming in there. Um, so I do feel more confident going into this cycle, I just don't want the expectation that there's gonna be a, a large sum of money to solve some of our bigger, bigger projects that we have as priorities. Um, and also that the, the money that's, we're applying for now is five years out. Um, and so, as staff reviews all the projects and recommends the projects, we've been working with the MPO, and they've, you know, just given us candid feedback of, that's not a very strong project, we would not prioritize that in your efforts. And so, as a department head, I've narrowed it down to about twelve projects, and if I may, I was gonna read them off, so that way you can understand what we are looking for to submit in the application process. Because the application process opens at the beginning of March and lasts for twenty-eight days, and then it closes for, for the review and, uh, ranking. So the first one, again, this is five years out, uh, Southwest Fourteenth, uh, and Middle Street, so this is next to the, the new police headquarters. It would be, uh, widening in, uh, the roadway and adding some sidewalks. Um, Riverland Road Traffic Calming Implementation, so right now, we've got a project where we're designing traffic calming, but we don't have the construction dollars for it, so we'll be submitting that as a traffic calming project. River Oaks, uh, was a, was a neighborhood that was eligible last year, uh, and it's just adding a roadway segment, um, on Southwest Nineteenth Avenue between Southwest Twentieth and Twenty-first Street. Uh, Bow Harbor, up by the Publix, uh, redevelopment, adding a turnally capacity. I believe the developer will be doing that as part of the DRC process, but we went ahead and put it in here because we know it's important for that capacity, um, to accommodate that area. Uh, Birch Road, uh, Mayor, we've talked about the future of Birch Road and what that looks like, so we'll be submitting that as a traffic calming project, uh, trying to add either maybe a roundabout, or some bulbous, or something along those lines that would allow us to receive funding.
Would the, would the narrowing of the street be considered a methodology to, to, okay, to, uh, to improve, uh, traffic calming?
To my understanding, uh, right now, yes, but that's one of the things that we need to further define.
Okay.
Um, Breakers Avenue, like we, uh, previously talked about, uh, Commissioner Sorenson, Rio Vista, Southeast Sixth, uh, right around the Henry E. Kenny Tunnel, there's been some traffic calming requests. And then Southeast Fourth Street, uh, Southeast Ninth, um, around just south of Los Olas Boulevard, doing some traffic calming in that area. So those are the, the, the main projects that we're gonna be submitting, we have a couple other ones that we're reviewing at staff level right now, um, but again, I wanted to get your feedback if there's anything that's missing, uh, based off of the conversation today and the criteria that we have, um, for us to consider.
Can I, go, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list, and it looks great, do we have a dollar amount in mind? Maybe I missed that, like, you want to apply for blank amount at the max?
Yeah, so each one will be, uh, based on the cost estimate that staff comes up with.
I mean, overall, like, are we applying for a hundred million dollars worth of projects, or, or ten million? I mean, what's our kind of?
I don't.
Do we not know?
We don't know, and I don't think there's a, a cap for consideration, it's just, as, as Brian alluded to earlier, there's only thirty million dollars for thirty-one municipalities, so, uh, the more one municipality takes, the less there is in the pot for other projects.
He said thirty-one million, or thirty municipalities, thirty-one million annually, or thirty-one millions for the five-year?
A- a- annually.
So thirty-one million, so a million a year for each of us, it's not a lot of money, okay.
Right, and some of the new roadway projects are way, uh, more costly than some of our traffic calming projects. So if one of those new roadway projects gets, uh, approved, then I would assume that that, that thirty million becomes fifteen million or twenty million.
Right, I, I keep thinking about the project in the Gulf, but that in itself is about five million dollars, so that probably would wipe out everything, okay.
Let me ask you a question. Probably Brian knows, so can I substitute for a bridge, a tunnel? Is that a, is that a bridge, is this a bridge opposite of going up, it's going down now? Can I, can I substitute that?
So.
Is it a roadway?
Bridges are allowed, but I don't think the statute even mentions a tunnel.
Yeah, and the AG didn't opine on that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So, Brian, you recall at a previous meeting in which we were discussing the federal, um, legislative agenda, and at that time, I included the word, uh, tunnels, and the, the, um, uh, and I believe that county staff consented to that as, as, and, um, as something that they would, uh, they would understand as increasing, um, uh, increasing the roadways. So whether it be above ground or below ground, I believe, I believe they had understood that to be inclusive.
Uh, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah.
But nothing's in writing.
Uh, yes, I know, okay, thank you.
Can I throw another, just on a moonshot idea out there, just for feedback, maybe it's a bad idea, but Broward Boulevard? Ninety-five to federal reversible lanes.
I gotta quit touching this, I get shocked every time. Um, so Broward Boulevard, I actually had a meeting today with the county in FDOT, uh, there's a review committee for a transit project on Broward Boulevard. Um, I've invited them to come to commission and provide opening kickoff of that project, um, they're gonna get back with me, but it'll be sometime probably in March or April, uh, and they're looking at a light rail system, they're looking at different lane configurations, and that was actually some of the feedback we gave today, was, uh, what would a reversible lane scenario look like?
Great, okay, and they're?
But let me ask you a question, I'm not trying to take away from what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is there an example, anywhere that you know of, where we can do a reversible lane when you have so many neighborhoods, contingencies that are intersecting? I've seen it on interstates, I've never seen it where there's so many thoroughfares, like, for example, if you use Eleventh Avenue Swing Bridge Road, that's their only way out of the neighborhood.
Yeah, so the feedback we received today was, the reversible lanes would be extremely complex and challenging, um, but they didn't have the data for us, so they said they'd go back, put something together, uh, and, and create a scenario and, and kind of show the output of that. Um, but I agree, it would be extremely co- complicated, especially if you're gonna run some kind of transit or light rail.
But, but they'll look at it, right?
They are gonna look at it.
Thanks, thanks.
Would that go through the town of Davie?
Just think, we all know the town of Davie likes to say no to every idea.
Brian, when can, uh, or Mayor, the love for Brian and Todd to come back and join us again for a heck of a good time?
Finish their presentation.
They never finished, they only got to the first sentence.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I thi- I think we got the basics.
This was not the.
I don't, I don't think we.
Pensores in, uh, hour, this was, but you asked some really, really good questions, because there were a lot of confused.
I think we got to the substance of this.
You had some, you, your questions would help clarify a lot of, a lot, so.
You go downtown, yeah, I'll go.
All right, so, so, Mr. Colak, if you want to continue your presentation?
Sure, um, let's see, how far we got? Okay, so basically, this is our role, it's to teach, this is for staff, how to put in an eligible project that will be deemed by county legal as eligible. Uh, we do trainings, we've already had a couple of trainings for this cycle, just to reiterate that our first training was over, what is a cycle one project? All these questions that you've been asking me, we gave that training to them, and then the second one was, here's how, uh, this is gonna be an eligible cycle three project, and then we're here to support in case, you know, the staff wants to reach out to us and say, hey, we got an important project, how can we make it eligible, get it ranked highly? We're here to give that advice to you. So, we have two functions, according to the county goal, first is to rank the projects that come in, and the second is to recommend for projects to go into the fifth-year plan. Now, it is truly a recommendation, uh, in one of the two years that I managed, they didn't, uh, they didn't really take a hundred percent of our recommendation, uh, the second year, they did, uh, they're, they actually have autonomy, they can choose what they want, even if there are projects that aren't ranked as high, so they could pick the lowest-ranked project if they wanted to. And then, uh, once again, out of the surtax, we're only ten percent, but within that ten percent, we're just one of the four spending avenues that we have available, and last year, our budget was nineteen and a half, after they took the co- community shuttle off of the top. So they, ten percent for twenty twenty-six was thirty-nine point two million, and that thirty-nine point two, um, basically, twenty of it went to community shuttle, and the other twenty went to recommend projects. So, cycle one, we're the top hundred and ten out of the five-ten, and then new ones are any of the old projects that didn't make the one-ten, or they're new projects that you just decided you wanted to submit, uh, that wasn't in the original list provided for the twenty eighteen surtax, and I'll hand it over to Todd.
Throw some brevity on the, brevity on this as well, but the, the thing that I really wanted you to get from this particular slide is the fact that things are moving forward with the funding agreements for cycle one. And the other element that I want you to see as an indirect is, you see almost forty percent of the cycle one funding amount is executed or underway, and another thirty-six percent that's in progress. Now, you see over on the other side, though, there are thirty-four cycle one projects that have not been started. That is an important number, as well as the twenty-seven that are in progress, because there is opportunity where those projects, like the one that you had, could be deemed ineligible. Because ultimately, eligibility is on the front end, but it's on the back end too, and that's the message that I want you to take away from this, is that when you're looking at the funding agreement, if they find that it does not fit the eligibility for the state statute, you could get removed, so it could mean other projects move forward. But, that's good news to some degree, because that means we can start looking at these new MCPs, and as, uh, Ben's mentioned, I've been working with your staff to go through, how do we do the right kind of project description? So that way, when Angela and her team, the, the county council is looking at them, they can see that this meets the eligibility, and then it can move these things through quicker, and more importantly, so they're not coming to you asking you for a resolution of support, which is one of the requirements, before it's actually deemed eligible. So we're getting ahead of that game and working with them on that point. So, as Ben had mentioned, the second Friday of, of March, we're gonna be opening up the process, it's open for twenty-eight days, but another element that I want you to consider, and Commissioner, that's why I like that you're saying come back, because we open that data, that database is open twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So we're here to work with you all through the year as you're developing your ideas, this means you submit the application within that period, so we can work with you throughout the years to make sure that you've got good projects queued up, so that way, when it opens, submit, submit, submit. And so Gail and I have been going through that process together as well.
So.
Oh, please.
So is it possible, when you come back, we have a county person here who can either legally opine, or validate, um, our hypothetical, this project might work?
We, we can certainly invite Brian, I, do you have any more to that?
Uh, yes, our main contact is Mrs. Angelo Wallace, and she said she'd be happy to attend any meeting.
I think that'll help us to really home in on what our definition of our project and how we could make it either the tunnel, the, the bridge, the walkway, the common device, the rail, or the jump board, or whatever it is where, where we're trying to go.
Yes, absolutely.
That'd be great.
And I do include in here, by the way, just so you have this information, this is, uh, published on the web, so if you want to take a look at it, it has your list, so you can see where your projects are within the funding agreement. Um, I also then, uh, put our website on there, we do all of our policies and the procedures, you can see that, it's all transparent, so you know exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it. This is an overall of the process itself, the two main highlights here is the eligibility side of it. So, as Ben had mentioned, as part of your application process, we're now engaging the county to get ahead of the game, but even after we collect all of your applications, you're submitted, you're complete, there's another eligibility review, but again, we're getting ahead of you before you do your resolutions of support. And then the Oversight Board also does their eligibility review, so there's multiple functions now, and we're laying this all out graphically, so you can see a yes-no decision matrix, how's this whole process worked? Eligibility, we've discussed, and again, it's important on this element, is that it wasn't that the definition changed, it was how it was understood and presented, particularly on the project side of it. Um, and that's one of the messaging, that's why we're here, is to say, hey, this is the statute, this is what it pays for, and then this is our lane within the MPO. And then I, I want to end this by saying, please, I have my number there, call me at any time, uh, my credentials are, so we're actually headquartered in Fort Lauderdale, I'm a CBE firm, um, so I moved our headquarters here a little over ten years ago from Washington DC.
Awesome.
And give me a call, so we're, we're happy to help.
Is this your personal cell number?
Uh, no, my personal cell, and I'm actually happy to give it to you.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, but yeah, no, you're, you're more than welcome to it, it's a two oh two number, uh, give me a call, because, because Chris, my hope is, is that as we show that we can, we can deliver breakers and find that way as a problem-solving, that we can really make this happen. My firm's been involved, we actually manage the Pennsylvania, uh, program for, uh, the lottery fund, it's one point eight billion dollars every year, we manage that program for them, we were also FTA's reviewer for new starts programs. So we know these processes, we know them well, we can certainly help you out with them, and again, uh, if you can all get my cell phone number, please call me, I'm more than happy to take you through all the, the aspects of this.
Can we get a copy of this email to us?
Uh, yeah, I think, Ben, you, you've got a copy of it, absolutely, any questions you have, call me.
Okay, great, any questions of these gentlemen, any more questions?
And Brian, you report to Greg, is that your?
Yes.
Is that the structure?
Yes, sir, he's the boss.
Okay, cool.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I. Our love, please.
Go ahead. So I, I just wanna, you know, and I want to say thank you to both of you, and I, I really do appreciate the work that you guys do and, and with the MPO. My concern is always with what's going on with the county, I mean, it's, because that's where, you know, the amendments come, the rules seem to change. rules seem to change, the goalposts move. I share some of Chris's sentiments. It's tough to follow. It really is, you know, to try to make heads and tails of it. It's a difficult process.
So you think Angelo, who seems to be the arbiter of, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down in the county attorney's office, you think she would come to a city commission meeting?
I do. I'm certain of it.
Okay, so maybe we should invite her to a conference meeting and have that conversation.
Yeah, I think we have to have more certainty. And I also want to just echo something that you mentioned earlier on, Mayor, that, you know, I don't know what the dollar amount is that's generated out of the city of Fort Lauderdale, but I'm sure it's a hefty chunk of the total revenue. So I do share that concern, that I think that we need to be treated equitably, and we should hopefully get our fair share. Ben, I don't know what we do about some of our major projects that you think might not be eligible, but there are major projects. So there are major transportation and mobility projects. Why shouldn't we want to find a way to make them eligible? I mean, we've already said, as a city, these are our transportation and mobility priorities. So we should be able to tap into these funds for that, because that's what we've expressed, you know, as a municipality. And again, because of the fact that I think we do contribute such a hefty portion of revenue, I just want to make sure that we're getting our fair share, and that it's equitable in terms of the percentage of the dollars that are going out relative to the dollars that went in. And that's about all I've got to say. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Vice Mayor, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie, good.
Mayor, yeah, great. Thank you, Brian and Todd. This is great. For me, it really helps me understand more. So, I think, Mayor, it'd be great to have Angela, Brian, and Todd together with us. What do you think? Like?
I think that's what I said.
I'm agreeing. All good.
So we agreed that we were going to do it, right?
No, so I want to set a date. So
Oh, that's different.
Yeah, let's just
We'll see what's convenient for them, and then we'll ask our city manager to see if he can arrange that.
So two months? Or I just want to get a general
The sooner the better.
Right. Great. So a month?
Well, as soon as they can, you know, we can't just demand their appearance, like they have to be
Mayor, I understand that, but it's helpful to set a timeline for when we would like to meet with them.
Within the month would be nice.
Perfect. I love it. I'm great.
If they're available, sure.
I think we should try to do it sooner than the joint government campus meeting.
That's easy.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. So, we're good with that.
Always a comedian.
Thank you.
That basically means that we want to schedule them for the meeting on the 15th. That's what, I mean, that's what I just heard. Since that's, we have one more opportunity in the next month.
February 15th?
I'll ask.
We can do it then. If she's available.
We'll see if Angela's available, but that would be the only other time we could do it this month.
And also, we should invite Mrs. Cassini as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Because she, Cassini works for the county administrator.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Wallace works for the county attorney.
Right. So if we can invite them both, that would be great. Have a roundtable.
I'll send them an email while we're
Those are the same ones that came to our MPO meetings, sitting there answering questions as we talked about the whole SRTAX piece, which you all weren't fortunate enough to be a part of that. And that's why I say, anyone that can help us answer the questions that we have, along with you, will give us a better understanding.
Okay.
Right.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate it. It's totally confused us. No, just kidding.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so we now have commission reports. I just want, would you want to do the shade meeting first, or the commission reports?
We have people here for the two shade meetings. It would require that we clear out the room or go somewhere else. Is your court reporter here yet?
There, we have one person, I know some are here.
That will be the actuary that's here for the one item. Why don't you go ahead and do your reports? And then, once we officially clear the room out, it'll stay cleared out.
All right. I just want everyone to know that I have to leave here at 10 minutes to 5:00. I assume it will be done by then, but I just have, I have to be somewhere at 5:15. So we'll see where we are with it.
We will. Are we doing CRA this afternoon?
It's got one, two items on it.
We have a five-minute meeting.
So if you have to leave and we're not done, she can finish up?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I have cake.
Yes, cake.
Yeah, that's right.
Actually, it's not for me.
Vice Mayor, do you want to?
The cake is for Melissa, because it's her birthday. Happy birthday, Melissa.
Happy birthday, Melissa.
I know, 28. That's disgusting.
Oh, to be young. Yes, we will celebrate, though. Cake from District 2. I don't know how I did that. I need to, yes.
We're happy to help.
Yes, thank you. So, we just attended, Chris stopped by, too, the grand opening of growth safety products. They make seatbelts, safety restraints for cars, NASCARs, space shuttles. So Jeff Bezos, Branson, Elon Musk, they all use this company to build the safety restraints in their space shuttles that have gone off recently. So a really interesting company. It was a great event. And that was at our Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport. Good job, Rufus, for, I'm sure, the work you did in attracting them here. They are celebrating their 75th anniversary, as well as Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport. So that was a nice event. They have headquarters in Germany and then one here in Fort Lauderdale. Let's see, went to the Navy Gala this weekend, celebrating the seven Cs and all the service members who protect our countries on the waters, and met the crew, or at least a handful of them, from the USS Fort Lauderdale. So that was, that was really
Very nice. All 300 of them?
Enjoyed that. About 15, they said, this time. But I think they're going to come in about once a month and do different things. So had a good conversation with Pat, the Chair of the USS Fort Lauderdale, and I know Ben has, and I know Chris went to the meeting on Saturday. So I think we have a lot of good synergy now with them, and we will certainly have a great event. I think they will announce the official ceremony date in about a month. I think they're still waiting on, I think, the Secretary of the Navy or somebody to announce that. So that's moving along. And I think the only other big update is we're starting to talk about the Galleria Mall. They attended my District 1 meeting last night, and it was a great meeting. We had a two-hour meeting last night, and just had a lot of people on the call, and on the Zoom meeting, and just really going over the plans. This is, of course, just the very initial conversations. But the Galleria Mall will be the big District 1 project that will hopefully get redeveloped, or at least approved sometime this year, and redeveloped soon.
That'll be an interesting discussion.
Yes, so residential, of course, as well as just redoing the whole mall itself. And with a little bit of outdoor space, probably tearing down a portion of it to just reconfigure everything. So, should be interesting.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner McKenzie?
We don't have a report, but I do want to mention that the USS Fort Lauderdale, they were at, finally, Friday's concert hosted by the CRA last Friday. We announced them, and they were a part of the festivity. So it was good to interact and showcase them to the community. That was good. One of the other things, just to be brief, in my agenda meeting last evening at Carter Park, we had a discussion about the bridge or the tunnel. I told them, no, the verdict was still out. But most folks have changed their tune to wanting a tunnel. So some of the folks that were pitching these ideas wanted to come out and speak, but one of their staff persons had COVID, couldn't come out and pitch, you know, tunnel last evening. But what I keep hearing sometimes from the mayor, and then I heard it again last evening from another group, about what divides the black community from the white community. And I don't use those words, you don't hear me say that. But what I do want to say is, in my 60 years of being born and raised here in Fort Lauderdale, this black community, a bridge does not separate us. Economics and opportunities do. So that's the message that my group wanted me to bring back to this commission, because someone is saying a bridge will separate the black community. But if you look at how you get to this city, you got the bridge on Broward, the bridge on Davie, the bridge on 84, you got the bridge on Sunrise, you got the bridge on Commercial, the bridge on Oakland Park, and that has never separated. That actually built an opportunity for us to come downtown over that railroad track, which was once a barrier in terms of how far you could or could not go. So it's not the bridge. And I wish we would not use that as an analogy based on the feedback I got from my constituents.
All righty. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, it has been a busy couple of weeks. It was already mentioned earlier by Mr. Colleca, but I did meet with Vice Mayor Fisher from the county, and also several folks from the county and MPO about Breakers Avenue, because I was concerned with just the whole process. So hopefully, we're going to get a good conclusion to that. Again, congratulations to Hal Barnes, who did retire and had his event on Wednesday, the 19th. Thursday, the 20th, I attended a public participation meeting for the Ocean Park Hotel and Residences along Sunrise Boulevard, just east of the bridge. Interesting project. 100 people were on the Zoom meeting for that, which I thought was amazing, from basically a few of those condominiums right around that area. That'll be making its way through the process. That evening, also attended the Lakewood Civic Association meeting, and I wanted to thank the staff, who always does such a great job at all of the neighborhood association meetings that I attend. So thank you for that. Friday, January 21st, a very interesting Zoom meeting from the Victory Institute with elected LGBTQ+ officials from around the nation, talking about education and some of the bills that are cropping up in legislatures all around the United States. Also, that evening was the sea glass ribbon cutting for the event. Great weekend for everyone out on the beach. Congratulations to Carlos and Venice Magazine and all those involved in that project. That's the second time that events happened on the beach. Last year, it was skipped because of COVID. Saturday, January 22nd, Action for Literacy Day. Tuesday, January 25th, I attended the South Middle River Civic Association meeting. Congratulations to that new Board of Directors in South Middle River, and thank you to the Board of Directors who have stepped down after many years of service to that neighborhood. Wednesday, the 26th, I believe Commissioner Saranzen and the mayor, unfortunately, I had a conflict and could not go to the Ignite Broward VIP event for the lighting installation from Broward County Cultural Division. But I've heard good things about that. Throughout the last couple of weeks, we've also had several solid waste working group meetings through the county. Glad to see an agenda item coming to us this evening at our meeting. Thursday, January 27th, I did attend the public workshop virtually for the Broward Community Rail. That was a good discussion, and it was interesting to see how many people were attending that as well. And that evening, the Morea Grand Opening. Nice to see Vice Mayor step out over the border into District 2. I know she really likes to leave the confines of District 1, so thank you for joining us, and the mayor as well. A beautiful spot on the beach, just east of the Paramount condominium. Really so well done. Just, and I wish them all, all the success in the world for that new restaurant on the beach. Also upcoming, we've got, let's see, International Swimming Hall of Fame Board Meeting coming up on the 8th. On the 10th, we'll be convening the District 2 Neighborhood Presidents Roundtable, where we'll get to introduce everyone to David. Trying to think, who else is going to be? I know we have one more guest at that meeting. I just can't remember. I think it's a project in the city that's coming forward to us. Was it? I'm not sure if it was. But that's okay. Also, that night, February 10th, we have Neighbor Support Night, 5:30 to 8. And then Saturday, the 12th, is the Lakewood Walk and Talk Workshop, to talk about 15th. Just a couple of items I wanted to bring up, Chris, to you. I'm hoping, as a result of seeing the article in the paper and the news coverage, when the governor was here announcing the $80 million in relief plan stormwater projects, that we'll get a list of what we've requested as a city, because I know that they mentioned about maybe seven projects, a couple of other cities, but nothing was mentioned for Fort Lauderdale. So if we can get a list of what we have submitted to the state.
Well, the sad thing about that is
Didn't they say we're getting 3 million?
It should have been 800 million.
No, but they said we were getting 3 million, right?
I'm sorry?
They said we were getting 3 million of that money that he
I don't know.
On the table. That's what I heard.
I don't know.
Well, I didn't hear that, but this was like, they said 80 million. I think there was an article in the newspaper.
Yeah, for the whole state. 80 million for the whole state.
Yeah.
It's been 80 million for just in Phase 1 of our stormwater project.
Yeah. Well, anyway, they did mention a few South Florida cities, so I was hoping to find out what we have in the hopper there, hoping to get some of those bucks as well.
I thought it was 3 million. I could be totally wrong.
Okay.
I hope you're right, but I'll find out. You know, insulting.
Okay.
Keep going.
Okay, we'll find out. Also, glad to see tonight, we have movement on the La Solis Isles undergrounding project with the bond. So that's terrific. People are really happy about that, after a decade of that discussion.
Decade.
That's the utilities, right?
Undergrounding all the utilities.
Right, too.
It's been at least a decade.
Two decades. Go ahead.
Well, maybe 12 or 13 years.
I know of eight years that I've spent.
Yeah. Well, now, it's getting done.
Steve, you are a mover.
Finally, a commissioner of that district who gets
You are a mover and a shaker.
Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie.
Just amazing.
I really appreciate it.
You should join us when we go downtown.
Thank you. I'll give you my schedule. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Anyway, we are really excited that that's happening. And I know that Alan will be meeting with all of the other neighborhoods in the queue, because there are others that are in the queue and have paid them money. And we need to get going with them as well. Lastly, I wanted to just bring up to my colleagues, I've been reading a lot of some of the proposed legislation in Tallahassee. Commissioner McKenzie, I know how you feel about resolutions, so maybe, you know, this isn't going to fly with you, but
Then, why would you single me out then?
Well, because you always mention how you don't like resolutions.
Just mention it and keep moving.
I'm mentioning it. But I read what the other cities in the county are issuing in terms of their resolutions. There are so many preemption bills right now. I just have a concern about it. I also have a concern, I don't know if you want to go there, but I have concern about some of the education bills. I have concern about some of what I would consider to be very discriminatory bills. But I can focus now, at least in the present, on just some of these preemption bills. I don't know how you all feel. I know Weston just passed a few. We always get, thank you, David, for sending us what the other cities do. But I'd just like to have a discussion, see how everyone feels. There are at least six or seven, you know, preemption bills. And I'm just really concerned about, you know, that chipping away at what local governments can do. So I just wanted to see how people felt about doing resolutions in opposition to some of these, you know, some of these bills.
Me personally, Steve?
Yes.
I just think
We have a lobbyist. There are things that we want to see pass in Tallahassee. We pay
them to go up there and knock open those doors, or knock them down. We give that to them individually, and hopefully, they can, they can help us. I just don't see where resolutions do that. And I'm not stopping you from doing it. I'm just saying, I just think, you know, these lobbyists that we pay can help us get in the doors of these lawmakers.
But I think the lobbyists have said to us that if they had that in their hand, a resolution, it's easy for them to get into the doors, and easy for them to advocate on our behalf if they know that the commission has, has given them the mandate to, to, you know, assert our position with regard to some of these laws. And I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner. I mean, it's offensive, so that some of these laws are even being considered, let alone should they ever pass. They're so discriminatory and so backward thinking and backward looking, that, you know, Fort Lauderdale should be on record that we do not support some of these laws, if in fact, we should decide to vote on any of these resolutions. So if you wish to propose a resolution, you know, do it tonight. We can add it on.
Well, only because I haven't really
The election is just going to end soon.
I know. And that's, you know, and that is the issue. I mean, I definitely have a list. I just didn't know if we should do, you know, one catch-all resolution. I mean, I don't know how you want to look at it. There's so many different ways. You know, again, there are the, you know, the preemption bills, the local government bills. There's at least six of them in terms of education bills.
Why don't you just narrow it down to, you know, one or two of the most egregious? Because otherwise, it just becomes
You know, it's tough. I mean, there's even legislation being proposed now, the transgender youth medical care ban, where a doctor doesn't even have to provide medical care. I mean, it's outrageous to me, some of these bills that are in Tallahassee right now.
Right.
Health care refusal bills. I mean, what are we talking about? Where do we live? I mean, it's just so, it's so obnoxious. I just, I wouldn't know where to start on a resolution. But that's why I say, do you want to focus just on the preemption bills? And what local governments cannot do anymore? I mean, you know, education bills, you know, Don't Say Gay Bill. I mean, I could go on and on and on. You know, the Stop Woke Act, Banning Discussion of Race and Sex Discrimination Bill, you know.
Why don't you stop going on and on?
Okay, I will stop going on and on.
I think your point's well taken. I would love to have a resolution or two recommended tonight. If you want to take the time during the break to maybe consult with our city attorney, and maybe we could cobble together something. attorney, and maybe we could cobble together something that you feel is important, and then we can vote on it.
Okay. What about the cake?
Yeah, we're going to have cake. Steve, also, I mean, what I do when I get this stuff, I just personally email all the representatives or senators when I get the information about a bill I don't like. So, do you not find it effective just to personally do it on behalf of you as a city commissioner?
I always still think it's stronger when it comes actually from, you know, the entire commission. I mean, why do we, why do other cities do that, where they take stands, not just necessarily? I mean, I think it's great to correspond individually, but I just think it has a little more oomph if it comes from the city commission representing the entire city. That's just my opinion.
Well, like you said, there are a lot of different issues and items, and I'm sure you are hopefully communicating and advocating also. You know, maybe we could get a little bit of information from Daphne to see what's moving or what's possibly moving. I mean, sometimes the Florida League of Cities will send out that call to action. I don't know if you all have it and subscribe to it, but that's kind of like, this bill is really bad and it's about to pass. Like, we need everybody. Some of them just tend to die and for us to spend an hour.
They surprised me too, the League of Cities. I mean, right now, they're actually supporting, you know, SB 280 and HB 403, which is, you know, requires a municipality to prepare a business impact estimate before adopting an ordinance, and then it gets into civil action against the cities. And that, so I'm not always in agreement with the League of Cities.
They were against it originally, and then there were a lot of amendments and changes that they felt like they could live with that. And they also felt like, I believe, that it was going to pass. And so, they really needed to get the amendments on there. So, I think they were asking us to really support those amendments. But, like I said, maybe we can get Daphne to give us a little bit more information or an update about the ones that we're really concerned about.
So, Alan, the mayor, he suggested that maybe I grab your attention. Is that even possible?
For tonight, no, it wouldn't be. We really need to look at the bills and do it right.
Well, could maybe we then have a meeting?
We can meet, but I don't know that we can have something ready.
Well, how about for February 15th? Is that too late? The session goes through Mar-? That's too late, maybe?
It's not too late. It usually gets voted on at the end of the month anyway, so.
Don't they go through March?
No, it's just.
March 1st?
Well, March 1st.
Yeah. Okay, well, whatever.
Because there are 28 days in February.
Correct. Except the leap year.
Right. Which has how many?
29.
Okay.
So, I just want to weigh in just very briefly, and I won't go on and on, I promise. I think the 15th is more appropriate. I would just also encourage you all to remember how, and I don't need to be telling you this, you know how politics work, but from time to time, positions that we take on topics could run the risk of damaging other appropriation requests that we ask for, because, you know, Tallahassee's a pretty partisan place. And so, I just throw that out there so that we go in eyes wide open, that balancing the value of this resolution and what it actually will accomplish versus actually what it might undo. So, you all have to come to that conclusion as the policy setters, but I want to throw it out there just so you'll consider.
Not you all, them.
Okay, so you have until the 15th to consider that.
Okay, thank you. So if.
Anything further?
So, if we could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Glassman. Yeah, I agree with you on your concern with those bills, especially preemption. Well, all of them, but we're, you know, I believe in small government. I believe Tallahassee doesn't know what's best for Fort Lauderdale. That it's incumbent upon us and our community to decide that. And so, you know, to Vice Mayor's point, yeah, completely agree, reaching out. And I feel so strongly, I'm going to Tallahassee next week to just knock on some doors of lawmakers and just, you know, happily share our concern with some of these bills that they're driving forward, so.
Ben, what days are you going? Florida League of City Conference is next week in Tallahassee too, and you can join.
Yeah, exactly. I'm going to overlap, I think, one day.
Okay, because we, if you want to jump on or attend anything that we have already set up, just let me know. It's Tuesday's the full day.
Are you going to be up there?
Yeah, I'll be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, great. I'm up there, let's see, I fly up Wednesday night.
Oh, yeah.
I'm there all day Thursday.
Okay, I'll miss you, but.
Oh, you're, okay. But I registered, I think I registered with the, because there's some things Thursday during the day, or.
Not Florida's League of Cities. Is there something Thursday? Am I leaving too early?
I don't know what I registered for.
I think it's Tuesday. We'll talk about it.
Registered for something, who knows what. But, okay, thanks, yeah. So, I'll be up there. That's great. So, we'll tag team you. I'll jump on Thursday and advocating. So, that's great. Thank you. Today is the first day of Black History Month, and I didn't know that there's a theme every year. This year's theme is Black Health and Wellness. So, what, are we doing, are there any, do we ever have Black History events in the city? And I'm going to get into the scheduling thing, but yeah.
The one that comes to mind that we've held off on for this year is the Ruben Stacey unveiling.
Okay.
It's Tuesday.
Great. So, that's a week from today. Yeah. So, that's looking good. It's been a lot of coordination, but it's all looking good. So, thanks for mentioning that. So, it's Ruben Stacey unveiling of the signs on Davie Boulevard. So, it's at 1:00 PM. It'll basically be at St. Thomas Aquinas High School at 1:00 PM. Commissioner McKenzie, one of the thoughts I had, wanted to see if you're okay with this, is just having maybe some sandwiches and stuff here for the family to grab some sandwiches here and then roll over to St. Thomas, you know, right after. So, that's some, very informal.
Is this a meeting place to go over there?
Sorry?
Is this the meeting place to go over there?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. It's kind of, you know, maybe meet at noon, and then we just roll over there, and yeah, something.
It's fine with me. I mean.
Okay.
If we use like a restaurant over there, O'Turors or.
Yeah, we could.
Or St. Thomas. I mean, if it's going to be sandwiches or something like that.
I'm going to look in, yeah.
Right at the.
Right there at the site. Yeah, I'd be great with that too. Maybe do it there, yeah.
People don't have to worry about transportation.
Love it. I'll check into that. That'd be great.
On your agenda tonight, just to highlight, the Sis Trunk Festival is on, is a special event approval tonight.
Oh, great.
Every intention that that'll go forward this year as well.
That'd be in, okay, perfect. So, Ruben Stacey, obviously, I know Commissioner McKenzie and I would love for all of you to be there, 1:00 PM on February 8th. That is that event.
Ben, forgive me, I would love to attend, but I'll be in Tallahassee.
Okay, yeah, that's all good. Thank you. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Glassman, I know this is kind of straddles both of our districts. The Southwest Second Street, I was getting asked on what's the status of that. Chris?
Yeah, so your city attorney and I are working with outside counsel and the contractor for that site to try to hopefully settle our differences and some construction work that was done. That meeting's scheduled for next Wednesday. I hope it's the only meeting on the topic, and I hope that construction commences as soon thereafter as possible. Otherwise, we will exercise the rights we have in that contract to go after the bondholders and have the project completed a different way.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks for that update. Alan, Southwest Sixth, that right-of-way, and where are we on that?
I have to, it's long and convoluted, so I will email you the update, but essentially, it's, again, we're dealing with Platts, rights of ways, and we get some difficulty into landscaping it to do anything but be in the spirit of a right-of-way, because then we essentially are abandoning it, and we get into all kinds of issues. So, I'll send a detailed explanation. I can send it to the whole commission as well, since it's been brought up here with the full update.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Continue to get just a lot of concerns from neighbors about the state statute around anonymous reporting, and you can't report anonymously. Chris, Alan, what's the, so I can't ask a staff member to report something on their behalf if a neighbor brings it up? Right? Is that right?
That's the guidance that I've been given, yes.
Okay. So, how could a commissioner report something? How could I report something?
You would have to notice it yourself. And again, it can be, you know, we live in a very, our statutes are very clear with public records. So, it would be legitimately, if you see something that you feel is a violation that you want to call in, you can always call code and say, "I just saw this" or "that." But, understanding that if you have a constituent call you or email you and say, "I see this," and then immediately thereafter you're calling code, we don't want to get into a situation where we're circumventing the statute. Because part of it too, again, part of the nuance in the way the statute's written, is that it's not a matter of receiving an anonymous complaint and even being investigated, or that it's a life safety issue, but we can't even initiate an investigation unless it's apparent on the face of the complaint that it is an imminent life safety issue. So, I know we've had some instances with some unpermitted work that, in one instance at least, resulted in possibly a fire, or the start of a fire. But, on its face, again, just the fact that it's unpermitted is insufficient under the statute. It's got to be an imminent threat. Now, there's some discussion, and unfortunately, it's such a new statute, there's no guidance behind it. But presumably, one of the sponsors of the bill has publicly stated that it wasn't supposed to include building code. But that's not in the statute, and unfortunately, we're stuck with the language of the statute and what we deal with. So, until we get more guidance, we're kind of stuck where we are.
Okay, so the only way a staff person or commissioner could ever report anything is if they're the first one to see it.
Well, you have to see it, yeah. You have to witness it.
First one.
15 people may have seen it before you.
To publicly acknowledge it.
You just have to witness it.
Right, you have to witness it. But again, be careful.
No, he didn't say that. He said if someone else witnessed it.
And for your own protection, again, and not just for protection, but the fact that if we bring up a case, you know, if I'm a lawyer on the other side, and I have access to public records, which I do, okay, and I find out that 15 people have emailed you with this problem, and then all of a sudden, you're the complainant, I'm going to say that to the special magistrate, and the special magistrate under the statute is very well going to throw out that case. So, every, all the enforcement work that just occurred just got washed away. That's what I'm trying to protect. So, if you legitimately see it, and it's not a result of somebody bringing it to your attention, you know, I recall some commissioners from prior commissions driving down the street and saying, "Well, what is this?" And they see it, and they immediately call and say, "Hey, I think we have a violation here. Can somebody check it out?" That's certainly fine, because it's something you witnessed.
Unless, but you can't do that if someone's made you aware of that, right?
Again, it comes down to, we're stuck with the statute the way it's written. So, you run the risk, if that's the case, you run the risk of, and again, the person, if it's legitimately a life safety issue, the person that's seeing it should be able to report it.
I'm not saying life safety stuff. I'm saying regular, you know.
Well, regular stuff doesn't.
Regular code issues and so forth.
Right.
I think Alan's saying life safety.
Well, life safety is what is the exception to the anonymity. So, we can take in an anonymous complaint if it's an imminent life safety issue. So, if you don't want your name disclosed, but you call me and say, "Look, you know, there's an imminent issue. There's a pool. There's no."
Something's going to fall down.
Right, something's going to fall down, the pool, the roof's about to fall down in this house. There was a fire there a few weeks ago. You know, something to that effect that's imminent. We can go out there, even if it's anonymous. But unless it's an imminent life safety issue, it cannot be anonymous. We need a name and an address.
So, all these years I've been here, we've been asking people, "If you see something, say something." That's out the door?
They have to identify themselves, and that's pursuant to your Florida legislature.
So, if I do not follow that person in Tallahassee, the only repercussion for me is I may be called into court.
Probably very unlikely you'll be called into court, but it could give that person a defense, because under the statute, it's not a valid complaint, and that entire investigation and the findings would be gone.
So, typically, Alan, the things that we're calling, you know, I know me, for an example, is pretty much code violations, right? So, I mean, how is that going to rise to the level of me being in front of the Supreme Court?
It's not going to be in front of the Supreme Court, but if, let's say, you notice a missing windows in the house, right? Say it's code violation, code goes out there, and it turns out that, well, they say, "Well, you don't have," presuming that folks have let you know that that's occurring, and you're doing it to protect their identity, they're going to say, "The commissioner called it in because these other folks wanted to stay anonymous." They possibly can throw out that entire case based on that, because it violates Florida statute. So, again, it's a new statute.
Yeah, I don't agree with it, but.
We don't either.
For the record, when they call me with a complaint, I go out and look at it, because it's three sides to every story, and then I send it in. Because some people aren't forthcoming with information, just having a civil dispute with the neighbors. But that's how I've been kind of governing a ruling when it comes to code violations and things of that nature. I go out and put my own eyes on it, or send a staff person out to make sure those windows are broken, make sure what is being described to me as a code violation is that.
It's not a veritable statute, and it's kind of, that very nuance there, that how's an inspector supposed to know, for example, in the exemption, that there is an exemption without them investigating it. They can't even initiate the investigation.
Yeah, but the governor's intent when he did that was stop folks from, you know, shutting down restaurants and things of that nature with anonymous calls. And if you're going to, you know, call and say they're not wearing the face mask and not six feet apart, you know, that's what the intent was. But then, we do what we always do, is take the law to the fullest extent, coverage, and we can't even do our day-to-day jobs in trying to make sure paper is not thrown all over our city. So, I would be willing to go to jail or whatever it takes if I protected the little old lady who was afraid for her life because she told on her neighbors. So, I'm going to do a couple of things. I'm going to take it whatever way it comes in terms of the penalty, and in most cases, I'm going to go out there and look at it. But I'm not going to let, you know, citizens who are afraid, you know, to put their names on something, be put in harm's way. I am their elected, and I should be the one that goes out and just stand in front of this for them.
And there's an easy fix to the statute, because you can have that in place, but instead of saying initiating an investigation, you just can't initiate a code case. So, if someone anonymously calls in a serious code violation, it's confirmed by a code inspector, it's a valid case, and at that point, you can initiate the case. So, I think if you just tweak it where you can only initiate a case if it's validated, regardless of what source it comes from.
But I think that's the only way you get a case.
Exactly.
I mean, if I call and say, "The lawn's more than six inches," the code officer goes out. I don't just send him out. He goes out and he says, "Okay, the lawn is seven inches," and he needs a notice on the door. So, the way that you bring this back to us makes me think, and obviously, the commissioner that, we can't do this on behalf of an anonymous caller.
Again, based on the way the statute's written, that's the only guidance we can give, because that's all we have.
So, we can keep doing what we're doing. That's just overapplying to be safe on part of protecting the city, I guess.
Well, yeah, and protecting the case that you're trying to bring forward to the special magistrate.
All right. Thank you. That discussion helps a little bit. Let's see, next, USS Fort Lauderdale. So, Vice Mayor, I think, captured it well. Going to have, just increase the communication, just so we're all aware of different events and how to get the word out about the commissioning of the Fort Lauderdale and events around that. Let's see. So, for the commissioning itself, do we want, so it's, could be in late July, possibly, is when this would happen? Do we, as a commission, want to do something for the crew or have some event or something for that?
I think there will be a lot of events, and I think we will be invited to a lot of the events.
Great.
I don't think we have to plan anything. But I think we just need to make sure we, yeah, I think it'll be good.
I did recommend to the organizing committee that the city of Fort Lauderdale have a welcoming party.
Oh, great.
Like a mayor's cocktail party kind of thing, where we welcome them to the city and fit that somehow into their schedule. So, we can follow up.
It's a Fort Lauderdale party or a mayor's welcoming party?
It's a Fort Lauderdale.
We want to come to it.
We invited.
See to it. You get an ingredient.
I'd have to be a mayor to get there.
Well, they may ask us to help with some of their events anyway.
Yeah, exactly. But I spoke with Pat Dumont about this.
Bind event.
Last year, and she loved the idea, so.
There will be a request coming for some funding of some events, so just be prepared for that. I'll bring that forward. I don't know what it is yet, because we can't publicly say the date yet. So, but, it's an important thing for our community. It's our name's sake. It probably only happens once in the life of our lifetime.
Does it have to be the end of July?
Does it have to be during Commission Bridge?
We have to wait.
Have to be during the break?
We have to wait for the ship to get here.
It has to be that.
Can they just postpone?
Are you going? Are you gonna be on a ship somewhere?
I will, actually, yeah.
What we can do is, we can have your ship meet that ship.
Your cruise ship leaves, we'll have the berth in.
You just wave.
It's a commission break, what if we're not here? I'm sorry.
When you don't call, then you don't come.
When you leave the port, you get a sign, and we'll say that you're on board of the USS Fort Lauderdale.
Give me a sign, maybe the ships will pass in the night.
Yeah.
Hold my sign up.
Commissioner McKenzie, can we have those, like, the water, you know, firing as he's leaving?
For, for Commissioner Glasser.
We can get the raft, drop the raft, just jump in it.
But that's a mayor's call, I can't make that call.
Okay, let's move on, come on.
Okay.
Continue, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you. And then, Chris, I think I'd mentioned this, but I'd love to get a USS Fort Lauderdale banner in the city hall somewhere, like.
Maybe a flag.
Get it.
Hey, can I ask you a question, Mayor?
What's that?
I hate to keep going back to what we used to, there was a time when I sat here, there was Cis Trump Festival, St. Patty's Day.
Oh, we sat banners.
And ships were coming in, I mean, it was right here in front of us.
Flag here, neighbor, was it?
It's a little flag, but we had banners, I mean, I mean, what?
We used to have a nice banner.
Did you decommission that?
We used to have a nice banner, and it was, it was in your face, people saw it, you know, throughout the course.
You sat there for a while, so let's say like the Ruby Station thing, it's too late now, probably.
Sure how much of that is not because we get in the way of it as we sit here.
I'm saying, but that's what we used to have, it went a long way, I thought.
Well, if you lower your head a little, Chris, maybe.
Yeah, we can still fit it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could put something closer to the middle.
It's a great idea, actually, putting it in front.
Can you blow it up?
No, we can see the easel.
We'll have a banner of something.
A work, okay.
On the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Signs by tomorrow.
Well, basically, what we were saying, it was good advertising, so our viewers right now will see St. Patty's Day, Cis Trump Festival, the Great American Beach Party, and.
So why don't we do something recognizing Black History Month at the next meeting?
That, too.
Yep, great. And while we're speaking of dates, let's just kinda go through a few of our dates that we all agreed to be helpful. So just kind of next big events or dates, so we've got St. Patty's Day, is that the next kind of big thing we're doing?
No, Cis Trump Festival.
Oh, Cis, what date is that? I don't have that much.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-sixth of February, let me just get there, okay.
By the way, Commissioner Sorensen, there's a really excellent listing of Black History Month events in the new Riverwalk magazine.
Oh, is there?
Yes.
Great, I'll do it. Okay, Cis Trump Festival, great, so we've got that, then what's the next big date? We've got city events.
Yeah, neighborhood support, what is that?
Neighborhood support, February tenth?
Yeah, so you got a little easel there in front of the mayor.
Yep, great, I'm gonna be in Tallahassee, so I'll miss that, but that's great. Then, what else we've got, then St. Patrick's Day Parade, is that March twelve?
Yes. What are we doing now? What are we doing?
I thought.
He's shoring up his calendar.
Yeah.
So I thought.
Remember, we talked about doing calendars?
Yeah, but I thought the outcome of that was, they're gonna send out something based on a collective gathering to all of us, and then it's our responsibility to.
Show up.
Show up.
Oh, I thought we were gonna be talking about it.
No, I don't wanna talk about that. I mean, I'm not taking, praying, but we agree that Strategic Department would create the calendar, collect all the events, and then send it out to us, and then we pick and choose what we're gonna attend.
Oh, so that's what's gonna happen, Chris?
She's not gonna do our calendars for us, but she's gonna make sure that we have the information to choose if we want to go to those events, am I correct, Mayor?
I remember we were going to put together a list, but I don't have a status of that list, so.
That's not what I'm saying. We were gonna put together a list, she was gonna email it to all of us, since calorie, us trying to get a calendar together doesn't work. So she'll be that central, or they will be that central place where they gather all the events, and then email it out, then it's up to our aides to put it on our calendars.
Good with that?
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Got the thumbs up.
Great.
When do we, when do you think we might see that?
Try to do the whole year?
No, no, just say for the next ninety days.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, a week.
Perfect, yes, ninety days.
All right, great.
Great, that sounds great, thank you. Great, next, Tunnel, where, so I've been talking to, I continue to talk to county mayor and county commissioners about Tunnel, let's just kinda do a quick status of where we are on that.
What, what kind of feedback are you getting?
What do you, what do you, what do you, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, one of the things I emphasize is, hey, we're, we're gonna all, we're all in this together, we wanna work together, and that, here's why we want a tunnel, and here's why a tunnel is the best choice for the city of Fort Lauderdale. And, you know, they, so, they understand that, I think, and the question I always get is, great, what are your thoughts about funding? And then I talk about, you know, looking at federal, and how we're engaging with, you know, members of Congress and so forth, and that, you know, I, I think, Mayor also, I think it'd be great, and as I was talking to some of the county commissioners and the county mayor, you know, I said, hey, maybe it'd be a good idea for us as a city commission to just have a brief meeting with the county commission to talk about the tunnel, and talk about how we could work together and make this work, and they were, everyone I talked to was very open to that idea, so I was wondering, maybe we could schedule something like that to have a discussion before they, they talk, decide what the LPA is.
Well, I think, I think your point is well taken, but, so let me just give you a little update on my experience. So over the last two months, I've met with each, I've met or spoken with each of the members of the county commission, and through those discussions, I felt I had a comfortable majority who would be willing to support us, support the DDA, support, you know, all the folks that have, that have voted in creating this commission unanimously to work towards a tunnel for the train. What, what got me concerned, and I expressed myself at our goal-setting session, was that the night before, I saw a TV interview of three of the commissioners, Commissioner Geller, the Vice Mayor Fisher, and the Mayor Mike Udine, who spoke only about building a bridge. And that was a complete contrary point of view that they expressed to me in our private discussions. So I was totally taken aback by that, and so, and what we're being told is, well, you come up with the money, and we'll consider it. Now, that's not how things are done.
That's not what I'm hearing from them.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm hearing from, that's what I'm hearing from.
Okay.
Okay? They're saying, show us how you're gonna get us the money, and, and then we'll consider it. So, but that's not how things are done, things are done, we're partnering with the county, this is a project of regional significance, it's gonna impact multiple cities, it's not just a Fort Lauderdale issue, and, and it needs, we need to know that we have a working partner with this. Unfortunately, we don't have a working partner.
I think we do have a working partner, Aaron.
Let me finish what I was gonna say, because we, all right, so now, FDOT is, is going, has asked the county commission to make their decision on February twenty-second. That may or may not go forward, I don't know, but in speaking with the various members of the county commission, they're basically saying this is going to be a cost issue, you know, how much it's gonna cost, and how much, and who's gonna pay for it. And, and it's always been that, it's never, that's never changed, but now what's changed is, you know, we're, we're having to figure out how to get the money. Well, you don't really work that way, you start out with a goal, and then you, then you, then you try to achieve the methods for, for funding that. They're taking the point, well, it's cheaper to build a bridge, and therefore, we're gonna go with the bridge, even though we still don't know how we're gonna pay for it, and, when I say we, meaning the county, and, and that, and so, you know, instead of just, instead of considering social costs and neighborhood impact costs and consequences, the focus seems to be simply on dollars and cents, the bottom line, which is cheaper. Now, we have received information from several contractors that have completely reduced the cost of the, of the tunnel that's being represented by FDOT. FDOT refuses to accept their information. So last night, I attended their workshop at the, at the, at the Broward Center, and again, they completely misrepresented all the facts and figures with regard to what a tunnel's gonna cost, what a bridge is gonna cost, the impact to the neighborhoods. Let me give an example. So we, we saw during our workshop that, that in order to build the bridge, they would have to build it over a, one of the swimming pools in Regal Trace, remember that? Okay. So last night, in the, in the presentation, they said, yes, we are going to impact the swimming pool on the east side of their property, but once the construction is done, the pool will be restored to its proper use. So that means that once the project is completed, the bridge will be right over them, okay? So a person sitting by the pool will have the, will have the lovely experience of listening to a train rattling over their head five times an hour during rush hour, and that's, that's their answer to restoring the, the property adjacent to the bridge. They also talked about, that the tunnel would require a lot of land acquisition. Now, the idea is to build it under the tracks, not aside from the tracks. So that's something brand new that they came up with, that has never before been stated to the public, they came up with that last night. They also indicated that an eighty-foot bridge has the same expanse as a fifty-six-foot bridge. Well, the physics alone tells you that can't possibly happen. If you have an eighty-foot bridge, if you need the same gradient to put a train up there, okay, it has to be a longer bridge. But they're insistent that it takes the same length of a bridge to build eighty feet up as fifty-six feet. And finally, they talked about how all the different bridges would have a certain decibel level of noise, and they showed this chart of fifty, sixty-five, sixty-three, sixty-seven of the different bridge heights. But nowhere on the chart did they ever talk about the tunnel noise. So Alan Hooper raised his hand, and said, well, where's the tunnel? Isn't it zero? There's no noise. And they said, well, we're still studying that. So, I mean, the whole presentation was, was a propaganda tool to advance their goal to build bridges, and the point is, as a community, we're here to build community, we're not here to build just a bridge, to, to accomplish a single goal. Now, there were a couple of county commissioners in the room, and they, they listened to what was going on, but the reality is, I, and I implore you, and I appreciate every effort that any member of this commission can do to continue to talk with our county commissioners, especially our own commissioners, the Vice Mayor, and I don't think Tim Ryan is our commissioner anymore, but, but the point is that I don't think we have, we have a solid working partner in this endeavor, and if you feel we do, then I hope you're right.
So let's just go to the extreme, let's say all of that is right, we, I still need, whatever we would like to do, we still need partners, we can't do it ourself, we still need the county working with us, right?
Of course.
So we've gotta have a good working relationship with the county.
But if they refuse to participate, what are you gonna do?
So, so let me ask you a question, real quick, just, just pause for a second, let me answer your question. When you started, you said, you think you have the majority of them on board.
Right.
And when you ended, you said.
When I saw that news program, when I saw that news program, when each one of those said, they were talking about how good a bridge could be made to look, then we realized we don't have them.
That was the workshop.
That was in the news program the night before the workshop.
So what did the workshop talk about, the bridge or tunnel?
The workshop, which workshop were you talking?
You said Broward Workshop, you were.
We didn't have a Broward, no.
What were you at last night?
It said, that was when I, at our workshop, we had our workshop with FDOT.
I know that, but you said you, you went to workshop last night, or something you said.
Yeah, we had a workshop last night, yes. That was FDOT's, FDOT had a workshop.
FDOT, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think to get where we wanna go, which is a tunnel, we, for a funding standpoint, and for just making this happen standpoint, we've gotta have, we gotta be working with Broward County, right? We gotta be working with FDOT, right? We've gotta also have some good federal support, I mean, am I kinda right there? So we've gotta have good working relationships with those. Now, Mayor, to your point, hey, if, if right now, you know, one of those partners.
By the way, you left out one.
MPO.
You left out the MPO.
MPO, great.
It's the MPO, FDOT doesn't make the decision, FDOT just makes the, carries the recommendation. So they'll carry the recommendation of the county and the MPO.
Yep.
Okay.
Got it. So I kinda see this like, you know, we all are in different various relationships in our lives, professionally and personally, and sometimes it's just not quite, you're not quite seeing eye to eye, but you still, still need, know you need each other, and still wanna work together. And I think because to get where we wanna go, we've gotta have partners with us, I'd just really like to try to keep engaging, working together, keeping the lines of communication open, being hopeful and positive that, that there is goodwill, there is good intent, and even just take me on this commission, every once in a while, I'm wrong, every once in a while, it happens, I know, and you still forgive me, you still work with me, you still, still partner with me. And so I'd really like to, to do as, as best we can, knowing that, as with any, any entity, there, there's some times where we're gonna get frustrated. So is that a fair, and so to that end, I guess, Mayor, I'd just really like to try, if we could, to just meet with the county, because I think we had a good, positive dialogue with FDOT here the other day, and I think if we could do that with the county, too, that would just help move us towards where we wanna go.
Well, I disagree that we made headway with FDOT, because what they did was, they took all the information that they learned from us, and then made a presentation last night, that, that, first of all, they changed their numbers, they changed their costs, they changed so much based on what they learned from us in the last workshop that we had. And they, that presentation they gave was over an hour long, they had a very sweet-talking individual be the narrator, and it made it seem like it would be easy-sneezy to build a bridge through the middle of Fort Lauderdale, almost like it's better than anything that we've ever done, was to have a bridge built in the middle of our city. So we've made no headway with FDOT, and if anything, they've, they've dug themselves in, even deeper. And so I, I applaud, like I said, any effort that you might make to continue our relationship with the members of the Board of County Commissioners, and I think that, you know.
But let's not conflate FDOT with the county.
I think.
Yes, so two different entities.
Right, but you're.
I think.
So I said, I applaud every effort you might make.
I think we all have put some effort individually.
Yeah.
Over there. I think what Commissioner Sorensen's saying makes sense to meet and hear collectively what they have to say, because, Mayor, you've had meetings where you met with folks that can build a tunnel, and have assured you of certain, you know, nuts and bolts and prices, and you make the argument in the public, but I haven't met with those folks to get the same information, but it doesn't mean I don't follow what you're saying, I do wanna have a discussion about how much these things are gonna cost us, and where would those funds come from, and do our friends or colleagues over at the county, how do they feel about this, since they're gonna be voting on it? I don't know if we can get in front of them before the vote.
Yeah.
But I'd like to at least have a collective conversation, if we can do that.
I think, I think that's a great idea, well, I encourage you to have individual conversations.
I have been.
Absolutely.
Okay. But because we can't really, you know, talk about that.
But we haven't been able to even get a, a meeting with them regarding the government center, I've asked for the last four months.
Yeah, but I don't wanna mix the two, I think we should keep everything separate, so that in case we run into a wall, we'll have options. If we just say, we don't wanna do that, then we don't have any options, we just have to go with our own process, but I still think we gotta at least communicate with them in some form or fashion publicly.
I, I agree, a hundred percent, but we can't even get, sometimes we can't even get that meeting, we've tried to.
But he was supposed to, how, how did you do with your efforts, Mr. City Manager? For the tunnel meeting?
For a joint meeting of the.
No, tunnel meeting first, don't put the two together, am I correct?
Try to get a tunnel meeting.
Yeah, I haven't asked for a tunnel meeting at this point.
That's what I thought we were going to try to do, but.
That's what I'd like to do, so.
I've asked for a UDPA meeting, but I'm trying to keep the two.
Right.
Topics separate.
Do they have a, do they have a workshop on the 18th?
They do not, they meet on the 15th.
They meet on the 15th?
Yes, to select an auditor, so that's why they couldn't come to meet with us, so I don't think they're available, they meet on the 22nd.
They're, that's their regular meeting.
Correct.
Right. So maybe an ask, Chris, and Mayor, if you're, you're open to this, is, we'd love to meet with the county commission about the UDPA, the Joint Government Campus, separately, could we schedule a meeting that same day, right after, about the tunnel?
Same day?
Same day.
You mean the 22nd?
22nd.
I can ask. Well, the 22nd is when they have their regular meeting.
Or do you want to do the 24? I mean, I'm, I'm open to.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to be here on the 24th.
Okay, 22nd.
I can ask for that. The thing is, at this point, there's the thought that they'll vote on the locally-preferred alternative on the 22nd, so somehow we've got to put these, these conversations in order, so.
I didn't hear what you was.
Right now, it's contemplated that they'll vote on whatever their locally-preferred alternative is on the 22nd, so if we're asking.
We knew that when we left the last meeting, I thought you were going to try to reach out, that's what I thought, I could be wrong.
Yeah, we were going to.
Reach out and have a meeting about the tunnel, not the joint government center, the tunnel, that's what I thought, am I wrong?
No.
I don't remember that.
Okay, I could be wrong, I've been wrong, I've been wrong once.
So, Chris, here's a suggestion. I think if, if the ask is made to the county to have these two separate meetings, I think the mayor and, and all of us, if we like, could then reach out to the county mayor and commissioners, and possibly say, hey, would you consider delaying that LPA vote until we meet, and we're right now working to schedule a meeting?
Yeah, I can, I can ask it right now, and probably have an answer before tonight.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, great. I'm going to stop there with that, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
That's, I think, I think a lot of us have been asking that, so if you can now take that as a formal request, that would be great.
Thank you.
It's exhausting.
Mayor, I have four updates that I will hold until after our, if you're okay with it, I have four updates, but I'll hold them until after our evening meeting, since I think that agenda is rather short, so if you wouldn't mind, if we could convene the CRA meeting, get those two items out of the way really quickly, and then we'll set the room up for the two shade meetings, and that would.
Okay.
I think we can still get that done by 5:00.
Okay.
Quarter to five, he's got to go.
Yeah, all right, so let me, let me just go through my thing.
Oh, sorry.
Why don't you, why don't you wave that tonight?
Yeah.
The first time in the history of your.
Because what I have to say, the people want to hear.
Can you just, can you just send an email?
Yeah.
Email.
Sorry to have cut you off.
Smoke signal.
Okay, quickly, I was able to accompany Commissioner Sorenson at Virginia Stueman Young School, we had a, a meeting with some youngsters.
Eight-year-olds. You told us already, we heard.
Midday, no.
Heard this, yes.
No, you didn't.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
You did.
It left such an impression on the mayor.
You told us at the women's club.
Yeah, we heard about the eight-year-olds.
Yeah, we heard everything.
And you didn't do well, we heard.
Yeah.
Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you.
I can't remember.
I also took a tour of a new company that's made its Fort Lauderdale's headquarters, called Future Tech, a new tech company who's out of the Long Island area, who've now decided to make Fort Lauderdale their headquarters and their home, and it's really a great company, they have locations all over the world, and, and it's great to finally get to meet these folks and, and hear more about their expansion plans here in our city.
Where are they?
The top of 500 East Broward, that, that corner building where Morton's is.
Okay.
Upstairs.
What part of Long Island are they from?
Why don't you.
The other part. Opposite of you.
So, this Thursday, I am speaking at the Tower Forum as part of a panel discussion on the Downtown Crossing, so you're all welcome to come there, too, it's at 7:30 at the Tower Club, and.
Downtown Crossing?
Yes, that's the, that's the bridge tunnel.
Yeah.
And, February 5th, I'm attending the installation of the new Commodore at the Coral Ridge Yacht Club.
Who would that be?
Uh, well, I'm sorry?
Chip.
Chip, yes.
Chip.
Different Chip. I will also participate with the rest of the folks on the Ruben Stacey sign unveiling at February 8th at 1:00 PM, that's at the Bienna Center at St. Thomas Aquinas School, and then on February 9th, we have the Street Art Regatta at Lauderdale Yacht Club, that's at 4:00 PM. Rest of the things, we've discussed, and so there's no point in going through all that, and so, so, so we'll conclude the meeting, and do you want to go do the CRA thing now?
Please, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, all right, so the conference meeting is now concluded, please call the roll for the CRA meeting.
Vice Chair Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Chair Trentalis.
Here. So we have complete attendance, let's just go to that agenda, just give me a second. So we have M1, a motion approving the minutes for the November 16th, 2021 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting, and the December 7th, 2021 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I have a move and seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Why am I first?
It's your turn.